Okay, be better not to because we specifically said don't give us the tree on the hutch. And that's what's in your presentation, so.
That is the right example of what that tree would look like in the location on the Gulf Coast. We could scour 100 of the trees. That's what it's going to look like in the Gulf Coast.
Okay.
I doubt very seriously when the quality comes in. It doesn't need 500-foot set back, for sure. There are ordinance of 9'4" and 12 feet.
Right.
Now, this isn't the actual poles. The wood poles only 35 feet don't clear clutter and require us to go up above that if we could. And the steel poles approximately 50 feet still don't clear clutter and require us to go higher if utility relays which do. If that happens to be the house on Red Temple Road, there's another here. And you can see the utility lines here. We would have to cross private urban with an easement and be in violation of 500 feet. We did talk about using a close contact design or a flush mount design. And what you see here is an actual tower on Route 287. As you can see, because of its narrow design, cables won't fit inside. So, I recall, I think it was our first meeting, one of your issues was that cables wouldn't be inside. Now, if we go to this little diagram here, because the pole is so narrow, you can't fit the 12 required antennas at one height. So, you have to break it into different heights. And this is a typical Verizon, let me get back, this is what Verizon does now. It's not what they did in the old days. This is what they're deploying today. You have three antenna at the top, six feet in height, and then we require a two-feet separation tip-to-tip. Then you have another three at eight feet in height, again requiring a two-foot separation top-to-top. And then at the end, you have another three at six feet. So, all told, you have 12 antennas taking up a grand total of 34 feet on the pole. So, anybody else who came on the pole would be down here in clutter and would not be able to supply the hand coverage that our pole didn't do. In addition, additional equipment that's associated with each one of these antennas, we use that equipment here, TMA, it's a towel-mounted amplifier that allows to gain back the signal loss that occurs as the signal travels up the pole and through the cables. Now, same thing with an RRH, that's a remote radio head. There's also other equipment associated with these things, variable electrical down tilt brackets, and they have actuators that come with them. So, that would be another piece of equipment that in this design would have to go below the antenna, taking up more room and space, with our design pulls behind the antenna. And this is the hutch.
Yes.
Again, this was selected because if this were being cluttered, currently on the Gulf Coast, we would be putting our pole and that. Other things to consider would be here. Evergreen stand out more in the leaf-off condition. It becomes far more noticeable. Mr. Alexander explained that earlier. Another thing is that if we needed to expand this, we've all tried to match brickwork outside of our house 10 years after the original brickwork, matching these leaves after the original design, they would not match with it. They would become more obvious. Also, the branches are situated at 10-foot levels. So, where we would traditionally work for an eight-foot separate, an eight-foot separation between each, this would have to require 10-foot further dropping stuff down. And it's problematic to expand it. And we did put this at the very top of the hutch. Those require an extraordinary high cost, a cost that we believe is not required because of the results of our visual impact studies. Other than that, those are the four things that you asked us to address.
Okay, what is the extra cost?
It doubles the site cost.
It doubles the site cost. What do you mean by site cost?
The site cost to where the house building was in 400. The site cost of the tower is more expensive. The foundation is more expensive. The labor to install that is dramatically more expensive.
And also, just to add on, if you're thinking about you're creating a much bigger sail, that means you have to meet the same structural standards as far as wind loading and speed. So, now you need the girth of the trunk to be bigger.
You put something at the top and just push it. So, you need a bigger foundation. Also, all of these leaves, although, you know, they are attached to the pole, they are really susceptible to technical correction. They will fall down. And if you go and look at other trees, particularly on the Garden State Parkway, New Jersey Turnpike, the Long Island Expressway, you'll see trees where the leaves are gone. And the carriers, woods is up, they don't go back and replace them. So, in our opinion, this is not.
Why would the carriers go back and replace as opposed to you as the tower owner?
Sometimes carriers go for their own paths. If it was our.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
We discussed that earlier on.
But your business, your company, you would be responsible for maintaining it.
We.
So, we would never see it with a leaf-off condition.
Well, again, remember, it is.
Did he walk into that one or what?
Yes. Anybody else want to take a shot?
No, 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 my apologies.
I think also, I don't know if you all had your visual studies that we submitted back in March of this year with you, but if you look at it, most of our views are so far away that you're creating, when you can see, if you remember, you had needed the insert photos if you remember, to even see them. So, now what you're doing is you're fading.
But again, that's what we had asked for, was to show us the simulations instead of showing the tower in there. Just show us what a tree would look like because that might say, "Ugh, we don't want that." Okay?
I think you should agree.
No, I haven't seen it.
I think you can more than be able to do it.
I've seen better trees.
There's been a lot of extraordinary studies provided to you above and beyond along the way, including a lot of materials given to Mr. Gray. We're hitting extraordinary costs too at this point just to get through the, you know, the equalizing process so far.
Okay.
We've had a lot of meetings, the public hearing, and so forth.
If you were driving up Glenn's Way in leaf-off condition, that's what you'd see. Really, you would see an evergreen when everything else has leaves. The brown pole, you're not going to see anything just above the tree. That's what you're going to see. Show me that in our visual. This, it would just stay.
Okay, but see, you're confusing me because you're telling me that in a leaf-off condition, I'm going to see the whole tree, but yet you'll see the top part of it.
Right. If you look at the visual study we gave you, balloon is just wider than the pole. Okay? So, if you look at the visual study we did, it's a four-foot balloon we flew that day, if I remember correctly. I have to pull it up. Four and a half foot. So, your balloon is about one and a half to two times the width of the actual pole.
The very top of this pole.
Actually, yeah, correct. So, you can get the sense of that you're talking about taking something that's twice as wide and making it four to five times as wide at the part that's above the ridge line when you're going to see it, as opposed to, and then you look at, you know, we simulated.
But let's stop with that. Let's take it from there because some of the simulations showed the tower with the antennas on them. And that's not, that's going to be way beyond four and a half feet wide.
No, no, I said, but I.
No, I know you said the top of the pole, but others, other photos are showing, that we saw, that are in the visual study, are showing the antennas as well.
I believe that you have about, sorry, go ahead.
You can't limit your argument to the width of the pole, obviously.
And to the width of the tip of the pole.
Yeah, I mean, once you put the antennas on, it's going to be.
And we did, we did do that. We have the visual studies though. What I'm saying is if you look at the visual studies that we gave you, or to date, you have a couple of shots where you do see the pole from cresting the ridge line with some deciduous trees, whether it's in the foreground or the background, but the parts of view, particularly with the simulation break, which I consider is one of the most apparent views, which is the view looking south from 83 Brandy Lane. You're talking about essentially going from, you're doubling, you're doubling. That's what you're going to do. To put a, to put an evergreen there instead of the tower as shown with one carrier, you're doubling it because it's going to go from eight feet in the earth to 16 feet where the antennas were hung. And where you see pole, it's going to go from about two and a half to maybe four feet in order to handle all that sail. And, you know, from a wind loading standpoint. And this view is so far, and you know it, that we've shown you, you're creating a destination and it's going from being, whether it's blue, gray, or brown, it's going from a sky color that you see, or a tree color, you know, a branch's color, to green. And it's going to be green in the middle of the winter, and it'll be green on the front. Your concern is, and then if you compare that with the view that's from the base of the cul-de-sac in Glenn's Way.
I understand.
You're not going to get any mitigation through, because the view 14, you're looking southwest from the cul-de-sac on Glenn's Way, you're looking through existing deciduous trees to see it. So, the more it looks like another trunk in the sense of being just a pole, the better off you are. Otherwise, with your angle of view up, you're creating a green destination. That's what Joe meant about creating a green destination. He didn't mean, you know, it looked like that from the cul-de-sac because you're seeing it through the trees.
When you get onto the Gulf Coast, you'll have, coming up Glenn's Way, you need through existing trees. And once you move to see is the base.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if it's brown and that's all it is, and you have a bunch of brown tree trunks around, your eye won't be attracted to it.
Exactly, yes.
Whereas you make it look like an evergreen tree that's sticking out much taller than any other tree around it, which are all deciduous trees, it's going to stick out no matter what. More in the wintertime, fall and winter, early spring than any other time of the year. But I understand what you're saying, but it comes down to a question of, I guess, aesthetics as to which one would be better.
Right.
I understand your argument.
Are we done with overhead visuals that we can put the lights back on, please? It's kind of strange having a conversation in the dark. Wow, okay.
I guess we should note for the record that I'm here, I'm speaking.
Yes. I assume you noticed Jim's arrival. All right, what I'd like to do at this point is we'll have Mr. Gray come up, our radio frequency expert, who's had a chance to review the submission that came in on August 1st. And if you could take us through your review, we'd appreciate that. Neil, have you been given a copy of his letter?
No, I have not.
Do you have a copy of the letter for him? We have a couple extras here.
Can you give me an extra copy?
I think we all have extras. Oh.
If you don't have to turn off the lights. Chairwoman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Ron Gray. I'm your independent radio frequency consulting engineer at Verizon Corporation. Before I begin the contents of my letter, I just want to point out that when I first began the review of this, I did have concerns about the location of the proposed facility being too close to existing structures that Verizon operates. I had concerns in perspective, it would be nice to have a one-site solution to achieve, as we believe that Verizon sought.
Right.
And we went through many iterations to ultimately determine that indeed, while not perfect, the location was reasonable. My comments tonight don't deal with whether the facility is needed. That's something that this board has, may have determined already. My comments will deal with the submission recently submitted by the applicant regarding reasons why they cannot propose alternate stealthy solutions as your board may wish to have the structure look like. And I'm not a planner and I will make no comments whether stealthing is better, whether it be close mounting or tree, but I certainly have to give you those opportunities to consider that in your considerations. If you look at the letter and basically what I've said, could it be reports to demonstrate the disadvantage associated with close contact designs for mono poles, direct energy structure as opposed to being not compatible for classing on the ground? A diagram is presented. Could you go to that diagram? Thanks. That's exhibit B.
Ron, to the extent that you can, can you please try to project your voice because it, again.
I'm not doing well?
The microphones are not set up so far.
I'll speak louder. Can you hear me now? Oh, I'm sorry, that's Verizon. You have to touch the microphone.
Thank you.
All right, take a look at exhibit B, the close contact design.
There's life.
You got it in your packet too.
Right, we have it, yes.
The representatives would like to see it, I'm not sure. In my letter, I say that while this presentation is interesting, it is somewhat disingenuous. And I say that because antenna technology has changed significantly over the years. Antenna technology today allows a carrier to operate three different radio systems into one antenna alone. And I included in my letter to you an example of an antenna called the Powerwave P90-14XLH-RR, if you find that.
Yep.
That antenna is used by a carrier, by the way, which Attorney Alexander's firm represents in the application, transmits all three frequencies, cellular, AWS, and LTE.
That can't be, if my firm's representing the antenna, it's going to go through Verizon or Verizon.
Doesn't matter, you use it.
So, just, let's just take it clear. Not that.
I'm going to say that, but I said.
You're throwing out the effect of AT&amp;T's work.
That's right.
And then AT&amp;T uses that antenna.
Correct.
That doesn't mean Verizon has spec that antenna and uses it in accordance with channels and bands.
There are no technical reasons, sir, why Verizon cannot utilize this antenna. It is not carrier-specific. Anyone can buy them, anyone. They are banded so that they operate in the cellular band of AT&amp;T or Verizon, the AWS band of AT&amp;T or Verizon, or the LTE band of AT&amp;T or Verizon. So, if I'm talking about.
I just want you to be clear, Ron. We were suggesting that.
What we're going to do though, I think, is let Mr. Gray give his presentation.
Yes. But this was getting interesting.
I take it back that Mr. Alexander has any knowledge of this antenna.
Okay.
Take a look at.
But the bottom line exists, there are antennas that are available for other carriers.
Take a look at the specifications of the antenna, look to the mechanical specifications. Now, this is one antenna that transmits all three bands. And if you look at its length, it's four feet. On this drawing in exhibit B, you see it's a six-foot antenna for cellular, an eight-foot antenna for cellular.
Right.
A six-foot antenna for LTE, and a six-foot antenna for PCM. Four feet does them all in the case of this antenna.
Okay.
In these antennas, all of the signals are combined on the bottom of the pole. They are either diplexed or triplexed. That's where you mix the signals together at the bottom and you send them up to the pole in one pipe. So, this claim of we don't have room to put the pole, the transmission lines on the carrier is somewhat questionable. Anything can be done, there are no technical reasons why it cannot be done if you find that acceptable. This particular antenna that I quoted is from a flagpole, so it's not even close mounted. These antennas are typically enclosed within a radome, and we've heard that while flag or flagpoles aren't attractive, I'm not a planner, I make no comment, I only point out that this antenna is used within a flagpole radome to transmit all three bands. But let's move on from that. I sent you another set of specifications to, assuming that for some reason, we did not want to have this antenna because it isn't something that Verizon uses. Take a look at the next antenna, an Amphenol BXA 780-6CF EDI-FX. This antenna is an antenna, by the way, that Verizon does use. I have very personal experience with this. This antenna transmits not only the cellular band, but the LTE band. So, the claim that three antennas, different layers of antennas are required to do this once again is not true. Verizon uses this antenna when they wish to reduce the wind loading on a structure to minimize lease costs or improvements to a structure. Take a look at the mechanical specifications of this antenna. Four feet long. The entire claims in exhibit B, attachment B, are just not reflecting the real world. This antenna is also diplexed. Both signals are mixed at the bottom and go to the top in one pipe. I find it curious also that Attorney Alexander talks about, or his people talk about, there's no room for remote radio heads or TMAs. I'm sorry, Verizon doesn't use remote radio heads or TMAs. That's AT&amp;T's design, Sprint's design, not Verizon's. So, I'm pointing out to you, do not allow or believe that what you hear, why something can't be done because of technical reasons. I don't care how this pole looks. I don't live in your town. But I want to make certain that you feel free to make a decision based upon what you think looks the best, and don't believe any technical thing saying why we can't do something.
Mr. Gray, I don't want to interrupt you except.
Sure.
Just on that thing, if the other carriers are using it though, and we want colocation, we should plan on those tilt mechanisms and other mechanisms having to be put on the pole, correct?
All of these antennas are electrically down tilted. The mechanical down tilt is 1970's technology. Today, all antennas are electrically down tilted, and they do this so that they can tailor the coverage of a site by sitting at a computer. By changing phase relationships with inside the antenna, they change the beam tilt so that they can tilt the antenna down. All of these antennas are electrically down tiltable.
To that, we don't need for any of them, any carrier. Thank you.
As I said, I just want to make sure that you don't shy away from something that you believe from a planning point of view is important because of something you see here. As I said, is it true that if a carrier used these antique antennas, six feet long, eight feet long, six feet long, with two feet of separation, that it would require 34 feet? You bet. But there are no technical reasons why that has to be done for any carrier.
The, one of the things subsequent to the last meeting, you did send us an email with a website that we were able to go to that gave.
We'll get on to the tree next.
Okay, good, super.
I then talked about the tree in, on the second page, the monopine design. At the last meeting, and I thought the carrier or the applicant was going to do that, I referred you to a website, the Holbeck Group, Tor Holbeck, who's designed many, many stealth trees. And to see the bottle brush on the Hutcheson River Parkway was disappointing.
Right.
I think if you find, if you ask yourself the question, or ask the applicant, how tall is that monopole? It's not 110 feet. It's significantly taller.
Right.
And that's why it looks so grotesque, because it's 160 or 170 feet tall, not 110. Do pine cone trees grow to 110 feet? They don't grow to 170 probably, except for a giant sequoia, but perhaps in this area they'll make 90 or 100 feet.
Right.
But once again, I'm not a planner. But I point out to you something else, this issue with the leader branch, and they're absolutely right, a properly designed faux monopine, as you saw in the photographs from the Tor Holbeck Group.
Right.
Has a leader branch, and it also has a lovely design, and he had a number of them in there. Either, and there were many options, as you saw, you could get them heavily branched, lightly branched, medium branch. If indeed 110 feet is the ceiling here, where your zoning doesn't permit the tower to go any taller, and the applicant had to reduce the height of its antennas by five to eight feet, I think that's the number that they used, to accomplish this leader branch, it's a reasonable number. It's my professional opinion that a five to eight foot drop in the antenna height of Verizon, and this was demonstrated in the coverage plots that we did comparing various heights, would have no effect on the coverage provided to the applicant. Granted, it would be five to eight feet lower, but you wouldn't be able to calculate that coverage difference, and nor even in drive tests would you probably be able to see that difference. The issue of how antennas are mounted in that is also a function then of how you wish the tree to be designed. But once again, that's something that I just want to make sure you understand, technical reasons, radio frequency reasons, why something can or cannot be done. I'm not saying that a pine tree is the way to go, but if that's what you'd like, there's no reason why it can't work. Finally, if we go back to that close contact design, I'd just like to point out a couple of issues about that.
Are you familiar with the, just to respond directly to their argument, the girth on these for the record? I mean, I've seen the pictures, I don't remember anything specific for these on the website. Are they doubling to four feet, 16 feet, anything like that?
Well, on a 160-foot tree, they would, but on a 110-foot tree, you saw the real trees that Holbeck designed, they did not have spreads like that.
And also, does it limit the amount of colocation you can get on the pole?
The tree?
The tree.
Right, the branches.
Once again, the colocation is limited, whether it's a freestanding tower, a monopole, a close-mounted pole, or a tree, is somewhat dictated by the spacing between antennas, the type of antennas that are used, whether they're dual-band antennas or tri-band antennas, and the structural capacity of the pole. How you decorate the pole is clearly decoration that goes beyond the technical reasons.
Putting these branches on can affect the antennas then? I mean, I'm looking at the picture there on.
The branches are radio frequency translucent. They do not impede the transmission of radio waves. And, and, and I hear a lot of, I always get nervous when I hear engineering presentation about, there's nothing in the record about the wind loading associated with this. Indeed, there is additional wind loading, but to make claims about that wind loading, I do believe is beyond the scope of the presentation so far. And if you wish to have wind loading considerations considered, where the applicant wishes to do that, then they should have engineering testimony, not attorney testimony, providing that information with respect to wind loading.
Just to correct the record, there's a structural letter in the record already from a piece on the P E.
About.
About stealth tree?
No, on the structural loading and design standard for this tower.
Fine, but your comment was.
He's referring to a stealth tree.
Branches would add dramatically to the wind loading, and that's, that's not been demonstrated. It's not in the record. There is a structural analysis of the pole the way it is with the antennas.
The structural analysis of the pole with the tree branches on it, is that, is that still a type of pole that collapses into itself?
The pole design itself is based upon how they do the joints or the seam in the pole.
Right.
And whether it's decorated or not, if the pole is designed to.
Trying to do that.
Fall over at 50 feet or 100 feet, that would remain the same.
Got it, that's fine.
Granted, there may be more branches on the ground, but I doubt if they'll jump.
Got it.
And, and the only other thing I can, I can add on this, I said, you know what, I don't care, I just want to make sure that you're not dismissed by issues that you think are important on how this pole should use. We're in agreement it's needed, we're in agreement that it's probably in a pretty good location, all of those things are important. Now, it just becomes a visual issue that you or a planner has to decide, but I want to make sure from a radio frequency point of view. One last thing, you might want to ask the applicant, or one of the applicants, if they have any other faux trees that they've either designed, built, or constructed.
Okay.
They may.
What is the cost difference, do you know, between a stealth or what was proposed?
From my experience, it depends on the type of tree. The bottle brush tree is, is, is.
It's just titties.
Yes, it will cost more, but it is not the cost of a well-designed.
Right.
Monopine. And while I'm. And while I have not seen a 2X, I certainly have seen a 1 1/2 or 175. But you know, when I went to my board of adjustment, or board of zoning board appeals in my town, and I want to build a garage, and I told them where I wanted to build it, and they said, "You can't do it there," I said, "But it'll be expensive to build it somewhere else." They told me, "I'm sorry, cost is not an issue in getting a variance," so I left on that one. I don't know if that's true in East Fish Gill or not. Do you have any other questions?
Any questions for Ron?
Not right now, let's see what there is.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Let's-
Just quickly for the record-
Yes.
In my career since 1988, I have built a significant number of monopines.
Okay.
They look like that one on, that you showed us the picture of?
Uh, they're all, we could go through books.
Yeah, go back to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. We could go through books, and we could look at pictures in a book. And that's exactly what you presented. You presented something off the internet, or something out of a book, and that's what it's supposed to look like. In the real world, that's what they look like. We can, you can spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to try to make it look like a tree. When you put it out in the real world, it's a steel pole with RF transparent arms coming out of it.
Okay, but the bottom line is, you said your company has done-
I have.
You, okay, you have done the monopines.
I think, I think I'd like, because Ron and I could, and us, we go all over, you know, the lower Hudson, mid Hudson.
Yeah, can I ask you to, I'd like to follow up on my question to Joe for one more second.
Sure.
What, what establishes the difference of that, for why would you be putting the monopine in versus the pole?
Why? It was a condition which we did not accept, and eventually we had to do it.
Okay, so it was the local municipality that insisted-
Yes.
-because it was an appropriate camouflage measure in their municipality.
Just like that, just like in the hutch, it was.
Okay.
Do you have any pictures of the ones you've put up in other locations?
That's all right.
I think there's a better, a different way to get at this, because, you know, we could go back and forth with Ron, just for everybody's entertainment for hours, because we all know each other's laundry and so forth, and, you know, I don't think that's going to be productive to you, because that's just going to get into a lot of wonkish back and forth. I think a better way to do it is to have Joe pull back up the visuals that we did originally, that had the balloons and the photos, and I think what you're going to remember when we went through it was how the views that were above the tree, were very, above the tree ridge, were very far away. And the views that were visible were through trees.
Right.
And that doesn't warrant, in our, in our opinion, and we can argue aesthetics, I'm not trying to argue the aesthetic point, what I'm saying to you is, our opinion, and you can agree, disagree, or whatnot, is that from aesthetic standpoint, the additional cost, A, isn't warranted to offset it, B, it's actually not going to accomplish what you're looking to accomplish. It's not going to hide it, it's going to make it the main event. And if you go back to some of the photos, what you'll see is, above the ridgeline are branches from deciduous trees. And now you're going to add a conifer, you're going to add something green, you're going to add something that's different than. So, first of all, going to some of these views that you remember, you couldn't even see them, you want me to dim the-
Yeah, I think we need the lights off.
He's one, one bit of thing.
Is that, which way is better?
That's, that's better.
That's good.
So, so my point here is, is- As a green building professional, lead AP, so to give you my perspective, as someone certified at the U.S. Green Building Council and being a lead AP, and I think your planner was neutral on this issue.
So you're not an attorney now, you're a witness?
You're, you're, it's good to have a couple credentials, isn't it? But I'll give you my aesthetic opinion.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, and well, I'll also note to you, you can go back and reread AKRS memos, who is your planner, who didn't find the notion of what we were proposing abhorrent from a visual at any point? And I think that's unrefuted. There are exact words, I could pull it out, but I'll let you read it. Again, what I really feel is, ultimately is, because without being too tongue-in-cheek, aesthetics does get into a little potato-patato, okay? And what I'd like to do is go through some of the photos, because as you can see, here's a ridgeline where you can't even see it.
I would like to cut to the chase.
Okay.
One, there are, if you're from here, you see all their evergreens there.
Yes.
So, but I understand your point. And whether in the midst of these trees or from this distance, do we need that kind? What makes it difficult for us is we say, "Don't bring us a picture of the hutch," because we know what that looks like, we don't like it. At least bring us something else, show us that, okay, this is what they say they can sell you, when we actually put it up, this is the result. We know what the result is, and we know that that's an old one. We can't believe that these companies are selling this and staying in business if they all continue to look like the one or not.
I'll put it, put it for a second.
The second thing I want to know is, you know, Mr. Grave made some rather serious, um-
Activations?
Well, um, statements of fact that, you know, even on the, on the close-mounted pole, you can do it. You're not really putting up poles the way that you're arguing for it. I would like a response to that. I mean, I think we have this pretty well set in mind, and we can make a decision as to whether or not we're going to require a fall tree pole, or whether we're going to require a- Except for, I would like to know more about your response to Mr. Grave's letter and his allegations regarding the ability to put antennas on that are dual design or tri-design, carrying all three antennas and all three signals in one antenna. You don't need the space that you need. I mean, those are the kind of things I think we need to know from a technological point of view, so we can then say, "Well, this is what we're going to ask that you do."
A couple of things. One, you cut a, you cut a tower short in another part of town already, and that's giving you a pretty fair amount of heartburn right now, because it came back five years later for, "We need another solution for that area." If you think about it, and that's going-
That's not what we're talking about, I'm asking you to share.
No, but I'm saying, just remember, you are future planning, you cut that tower short, and now you got another application back in front of you.
That's why I'm asking you to respond-
Right, and I'm saying is-
-to very specific things.
Right.
Please cut the snide comments.
No, no, I-
Yeah, we're reviewing your request.
I really don't appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm asking you a very specific question, asking you to respond to Mr. Grave's letter and his points of view that he sets forth as fact.
What I'm going to say is, the first way I wanted to cut it was a different way. So if you pretend for a minute, take that cone, okay? And scale it back down to being similar to the point on that.
It's going to be almost less than visible.
What, I think you answered your own question, what's the point of doing it then?
Because it's going to be less visible than the tower that, than you would have-
You think, you think that, you can't even see the tower.
Can we go to the next picture where you've, where, go to where you've simulated the tower into that picture?
Again, here, again, creating a green element in there, I don't think adds anything. That's our point. Mr. Meyer, your point, I could, I could-
I understand that, I'm now wanting-
But it almost doesn't matter, my, and I'm not trying to be cute. Our belief and our experience is that the carriers are using bigger antennas. They went smaller for a while. Now they're asking for bigger antennas, they are fighting and don't want to use any of these other antennas. They may be on the market, but in this market, I haven't seen them being used and deployed. I have seen incredible amount of pushback from every RF engineer in the, that represents a carrier, to using them. They don't want to use them, they have significant concerns as to their future functionality, and all the options it gives them to a later date.
Have your engineers respond to that, have them testify to that. That's what I want, I'd like a response.
Would have helped if we-
If we would have had Mr. Grave's letter prior to tonight's hearing, could have done that. We got a copy of that letter tonight.
I understand that. You must have, you must have some knowledge as to whether or not Verizon can use a antenna that can carry all-
But even if-
All right, but gentlemen, can I, let me address your last comment, Mr. Alexander. You were, you've been told previously that for us to be able to have information ready for tonight's meeting, or for any of our meetings, right? We've, we've said that you always needed to have the information into us by like the 23rd or 24th of the month? Because this, your information was submitted to us on August 1st.
We're getting, to be punny, we're getting between the forest and the trees here. The reality here is this, Mr. Grave, you would agree, and I'm sorry to cross the camera, but just move the dialogue. That Sprint, Sprint and AT&amp;T use LTE technology and use-
Neil, you've got to get closer to the microphone, please.
Sprint uses, Sprint and AT, there are carriers that are going to need to put, to put RRHs as part of their LTE installations. So, whether Verizon does or don't-
Wait, Verizon?
But just may or may not, I just want to, when a carrier uses something called a remote radio head-
Right.
An RRH, what they do is, they take the cell site equipment that was on the ground in that building, in that structure, and they move it up to the top of the antenna. It's like a smart radio. So that one little box up there, that RRH, becomes an LTE, becomes an AWS, and it becomes a cellular. It does what it's told by command. They don't use transmission lines then either, they use either cat 5 cable or fiber optic cable. So this whole concept of, and the applicant here, by the way, is Verizon. But if you want to consider other applicants, it's possible that indeed AT&amp;T or Sprint will look for an RRH. But RRHs aren't that big. In fact, they're bigger, no bigger than the antenna. And they can be close-mounted to the pole, so I didn't understand that, that argument, it can be mounted beneath it or behind it. It doesn't prevent a relative of close mounting.
You keep going like this, I'm thinking of a bread box.
The remote radio head is literally the size of a bread box.
It weighs like 400 pounds.
Well, they don't weigh 400 pounds, they don't weigh that much. And, and that's right, but notwithstanding, weight, dead weight in a structure, I'm testifying as an engineer now, dead weight in a structure is not an issue.
Right.
The dead weight down, it's the overturn moment of the wind blowing on something. In fact, I just went through a structural analysis in a tower where antennas were replaced by remote radio heads, and the wind loading was ultimately less. And in this issue about antennas, in the Hudson Valley, in Duchess County, Verizon is using four-foot antennas, not eight-foot antennas, and they do that to save money. Because when they go to a tower and they have to pay for more wind loading, you know, when you put wind loading on a structure, the guy who owns the tower, and Mr. Arthur can tell you this, "If you're going to load my tower more, I want to be compensated for that because I'll have less capacity." So they come in with an eight-foot antenna, and you say, "Here's the bill," and they say, "That's too much, we'll put in four-foot antennas." And that's exactly what they do, if it's convenient for them for cost. And that was my issue here, that what you see is a presentation to achieve what they want, it's not the real world.
Okay.
My, my point on the visual, by putting up these photos again, is very limited. So, whether you agree with us, or you agree with Mr. Grave as to whether it's physically possible to do these close mounts and what, and what it means, I, my position-
See, for me to understand, and this is what I'm trying to get across to you. You can keep showing me these sites and your visual analysis. What I want to know is, can you do the close mounts? You're saying, you're arguing, you presented your argument that you have to put up these kind of antennas. I've now been given information, and it has not yet been rebutted, and I would like to hear from your engineers as to why they can not put those close-mounted antennas up.
As a matter of logic, if I-
I don't want your legal argument, I want the testimony of your engineers. I don't want attorney argument. That's, your argument is not evidence.
But it misses the logic tree completely. If I said yes, let's say I said yes, and Mr. Grave's 100% right, okay?
Then we're going to do that.
But, but, but then we're back to the original point. Is it warranted as a mitigated measure? And what I'm saying is, is it warranted as a mitigated-
And I decide it is, it is a mitigated, because when it's closed and it looks like a single tree trunk, instead of things to come-
Right, if it's one brown pole, that's, that's less of an impact.
You won't notice it, you won't notice it. I believe that. So, if you want, you want my decision now on the record, and that's what you want, that's what I'm going to decide. Otherwise, we can be more deliberative, and you can politely do, what I have suggested now for the fourth time, is please let your very competent engineers testify as to why they want their antennas over what Mr. Grave has suggested, as opposed to you making your arguments as an attorney.
That's, that's fine. I just wanted to hear your logic tree on where you were going on the aesthetics, because that's why we put this up. I wanted to have the aesthetic conversation too.
I've said four times, I-
I understand that, but I want to-
If your argument is that the brown pole is the way to go, then, then let's do the stealth brown pole. Maybe that's, that's what makes the most sense.
A stealth brown pole?
Why not?
That's what we had, so I suggest close-mounted antennas.
With close-mounted antennas, that's-
That's what I'm only asking for now, can you please explain this?
Can I, I'd just like to ask some clarification here from an engineering standpoint, and also from our perspective as the tower developer, and what we need to do for all the carriers, because we're not just thinking in terms of Verizon.
Okay.
So, there's a couple of things. One is, we deal with a lot of sites in different areas. And for the most part, all the specs that we see from Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, they're all the same throughout the entire region. And in fact, even throughout the entire country for that matter. And I've, we've got experience in markets as far away as Ohio, we're seeing the same antennas. In the case of Verizon, we just, it is correct that right now, we have not seen TMAs, these tower-mounted amplifiers, or remote radio heads on Verizon's antennas on our sites. However, we are receiving plans right now for Verizon sites where they have added TMAs. So it's a fact that these things are coming down the road. Now, when they're going to come down the road, how much we're going to charge them to add those things, that's all kind of a business matter. But they are coming down the road, and we need to, to plan for them. And the antennas that are on there are eight-foot panel antennas, so we got to, we have to accommodate that. We have no ability to go back to Verizon and say, "Listen," you know, I'd love to go back to them and say, "Listen, make it all two-foot or four-foot antennas." But it's never happened yet. And then also, when we go to them and say, because there's another, you know, part of our business that we've done, particularly in years past, where we, we work with carriers to help them in historic and landmark-type situations, and it's mostly building sites. And there's very difficult to get, to get panels approved, you know, in that context, on historic buildings. So we're always challenging the carriers to say, "Listen, the commission, they won't, you know, you can't put an eight-foot panel on this building, can you basically put a two-foot panel?" I mean, and I might even go through a catalog, and I'll find them an antenna that says, "Look, I know you buy sweet com antennas, but here's a, here's an Amphenol antenna that I found, it's got the same frequencies that, that's in your band. It's just smaller, and maybe it's got a different beam pattern, but I can get this approved." And it's never happened, I've never been able to get them to, to go outside of their, their existing antenna design. So the idea that we're just going to show them a catalog page and say, "Listen, why don't you guys go back and use this," it's just not going to happen. And the other thing, going back to kind of TMAs, as respect to other carriers-
Is that the trend that's happening a lot? I mean, is there, I mean, you put together this thing with six-foot antennas or eight-foot antennas, does anybody really use an eight-foot antenna?
Yes.
I mean, you know, my first word processor that I had was this wide and this tall, and this thing has more than a million times more computing power on it, and can do a lot of things. I don't know of anything going bigger.
They are going bigger.
Why would it go bigger?
They are going bigger.
Why would it go bigger?
And as a tower, as a tower-
Please.
As a tower builder who's, you know, buying the infrastructure and paying for the steel, I don't like eight-foot antennas. Because all these large antennas means that I have to now, you know, put more structural capacity on the pole, and the cost of steel is twice as what it used to be a few years ago. So our towers are costing now more than two times what they cost five and 10 years ago, so we're having to decide that.
If our zoning ordinance mandated that it be, look like a tree, be a monopine, what would, what would you have done?
Well, that also might, that also was a business decision that we had to go back to Verizon to, because to give you an example of the cost, a regular monopole site with typical ground equipment, you know, ground compound.
Right.
A brown pole, it might be a $200,000 installation. Now, the site on the hutch, I happen to know that that cost 1.2 million dollars. And the reason why that got built, the reason why a lot of sites like that get built, is because all the carriers came in at the same time, and they all contributed, so you had six carriers contributing $200,000. So you have these very unusual situations where, where they compile that and they develop that, you know, on the through-weight property. That's not the case here, we have no way to recoup that type of money. We can't go back to Verizon and say, "Why don't you hang out until we get five other carriers, and we'll try to pool the money and build a tree," you know? It's just something that we can't do. We're coming in with one application, we already have a business deal with Verizon, and it would be extreme hardship to us to mandate a tree. Because it is, it is expensive. It's expensive to put the extra foundation in, it is, it is a serious extra wind load. It's not just something where, well, 10% more and no big deal. It's something where it might be 300%, so it's not only the cost of the structure, it's the cost of the foundation, which gets much larger, much more concrete, and it's the cost of the labor to install that tower with all the branches. So it's kind of a triple whammy on the site cost. And then once you get into the maintenance and adding more equipment in the future, it's much more expensive. So, we really- So we really think that the tree is, is problematic from, for us from a business standpoint. And based on our visuals, you're looking at the site from extreme distances or through trees. It's not something that is justified. If we thought it was, maybe before we would ever bring you an application, we would went to Verizon and said, listen, you're going to have to pay, you know, contribution for that, and, and that's the only way we're going to get this through, because there's a home right there and, and it's, you know, 50 feet over the line, so we need something like that. But we're way beyond that with, with these guys.
So the problem with the close-mounted design is that you have less surface area. So the only way you get as many co-locators on that is if the antennas are shorter, right? Whereas opposed, if they're mounted on, you know, six-foot arms, you actually then have a much greater circumference. Is that what the idea is?
Right. So if you have, let's use 10-foot just for an example, because it's kind of a number that a lot of the carriers use for towers, but we try to compress it a little bit on short sites. So every carrier is 10-foot level. So on one level, on one mount, the 12-panel antennas and all the TMAs, whatever equipment that goes, that goes in that one level. Then you have a small separation, and you get the next carrier. So in a close-contact situation, if we have to mount 12 antennas, we have to mount those stacked. And under each antenna, you've got connectors, you've got electronic down tilt devices that add additional vertical height on there. So it basically tends to, like, if you look at that picture, there's a lot of extra devices stuck around and, and jammed in there. That's all that stuff. You're basically, for every extra level that you're building for the same carrier, you're taking away one co-location spot. And on a tower that's only 110-foot taller, Verizon's at 104, 104, you're basically stripping the pole of the co-location capability. Because what's going to happen is, is you're going to be down, the second carrier's going to be down closer to the trees.
Why-
Can, can we ask for confirmation on that from Mr. Graef?
Just, thank you. Just a couple of things about the close mounting situation.
Right.
Across the river, Schwan Gunk, New York, do you know where that is?
Sure.
Verizon came with an application, monopole, 120 feet tall, 12-foot sidearms. It went on for months and months and months and months. Verizon, and the town said, we want a close-mounted monopole. We want a close-mounted monopole. Do you understand? Read our lips. Verizon built a close-mounted monopole. Because that's what the municipality wanted. Did it affect their operation? They came in, and by the way, when you ask for this presentation, why close mounting doesn't work, it'll be the same stock description that they do in every application. They just churn it out, they just change the name of the town, but it's identical every time. The literature does not support their support. And let me make something clear. You said this thing with the, the big platform. The reason a carrier likes a big platform, or would rat, would like to have a big platform, is it achieves something called spatial diversity. What it means is that one antenna is picking up a signal, and another antenna is picking up a signal from the mobile. With spatial diversity, the odds are that one antenna might be getting a little better signal than the other. So they use something called the maximum ratio combiner, which combines those two, and it picks the best spatial diversity. The antennas of today use something called spatial diversity in a cross-dipole fashion. One antenna's receiving this way, not vertically, but slant linear, the other antenna is receiving slant linear, spatial diversity, but it's done within the radome. So the diversity of the reception is nearly the same as eight-foot spatial diversity. Not quite as good, but the record doesn't demonstrate why it doesn't work. In fact, on this monopole, and you know where this is, it's just after that big shopping center on 287-
Right.
-in Rockland County, I guess it is, right? Is Verizon on that pole? What do you think?
Probably.
What do you think? Is Verizon on this pole? You betcha. I've been to that pole because I've worked in that town. And also, it's curious that, see the big aperture space between the antennas? What? Am I all right? Okay. Look at the big aperture space between the top. There's space in there for something else to go in there. They extended it. Just another carrier's going to live in that spot, because they wouldn't leave that much aperture open on this pole. I mean, that was good planning when they extended it. They allowed for another carrier. Like, you know, give them great credit, whoever figured that out, but there's the aperture space. And one last thing, as I said, I don't care tree, close mount, whatever you guys want to do, but if you do do a close-mounted antenna, whatever you do, have them paint the radomes the color of the pole. Because the last thing you want, and by the way, they can make the radomes any color you want, red, green, orange, brown, cocoa brown, or mocha brown, or whatever it is, they can make the radomes that color that causes it to blend in more. And even if you ultimately approve a 12-foot space, which is fine with me, have them paint the radomes, because then it won't be such a visual thing. And I'm sorry, I'm doing planner testimony here, but that just makes common sense.
Does the one that they put over at the Gunks, does that limit co-location, do you know?
The what?
The one they put over across the river at Allister, I say it Gunks, it's the known place.
And Schwan Gunk.
Right.
Does that limit co-location?
Uh, the design fault for multiple carriers. I don't know who else has gone there. I don't know. I, I can't say that, but the design still allowed for multiple carriers.
Does a close-mount design limit other carriers? Because they don't use that technology or anything?
No, all the carriers can use close mount. In fact, there are many faux flagpoles where there are four carriers. That's about as much as you can put. I did an application in New Jersey, a faux flagpole, four carriers. Verizon was the lead applicant, T-Mobile was the second applicant, AT&amp;T and Sprint came along. That was a four-carrier flagpole, even tougher, because when it gets to be four feet wide, and the radome has to be that big to make it look like a flagpole, it doesn't look like a flagpole anymore, it looks like an obelisk. But that's what this town wanted. They found that attractive. Technically, was it possible to do? Yes. Electrically, was it possible to do? Yes. Did the carriers get the coverage that they wanted? Yes. Is that what they originally proposed? No. That, that's, that's all I'm saying, is that there are technical considerations, and indeed, Mr. Mark Arthur has built, I don't know how many poles and towers you've built, I mean, and you've built a ton, so you certainly know what the carriers want. But let me say this, when they bring in their technical expert, and you ask him about eight-foot, six-foot, and four-foot antennas, and you ask him in the past 90 days, has he taken an installation with a six- or eight-foot antenna and changed that to four-foot antennas? Ask him that question. And he has. And they have. And they do it when it's convenient for them.
Do you know of any reason why antennas should be going to a bigger size, based on the current trend?
Well, theoretically, the longer an antenna is, the higher gain it can achieve. In other words, it can virtually amplify the signal. And so an eight-foot antenna theoretically can have a greater gain than a four-foot antenna. But once again, aperture isn't the only issue in determining the gain of an antenna. Aperture meaning the, the length of the antenna. Width is also an issue, and depth is also an issue that determines the ultimate gain. And beam width, in other words, how big an area does that antenna cover? All of those variables couple into what the ultimate gain of the antenna is. In a situation like this, and quite frankly, I didn't see it in the drawings, is it what they proposed on this pole, the antennas?
It's in the Peterson.
Okay.
The lows are in the Peterson.
All right. I mean, we can, you know, that's, in fact, I'll, I'll go look at that now, and I'll shut up, and then I'll see what gain they proposed, and what gain I'm talking about here, if there's a difference in gain of those antennas. That, that might be very helpful. And I may be totally wrong.
Okay.
While you're looking that up.
I'm going to look that up, okay?
Can I just make one or two other small points?
I really would like to get public comments, so go ahead.
I'll be very quick. Okay. One is that, I just wanted to make clear that we're not putting a platform up there, so there's no walkway area. It's actually T-arms. So it's basically arms that come off.
Right.
There's no actually walking platform. So it's, it's a light structure that's minimally, minimal structural bulk up there. The second one was really with respect to the, the photo, with the extra extension, you know, I don't know what the facts, I don't know if anyone really knows what the business situation is on that pole, but what I would suspect is that whoever that top carrier was, who left that space, they paid for that extension. They probably have lease rights to add antennas within there. It's very unusual that they would be allowed an extension, and that there would be maybe two or three or four other spots. They're going to probably fill those up. So if we go back and look at what that application was, I would bet that it's a single carrier, and they probably have something in their lease that gives them that, those rights. And the third point, last point, is that what's going on in the industry now is not so much new builds, it's really only real coverage problem areas, like we're here, upgrades what's going on in the industry. And the carriers are going around doing upgrades to LTE systems. And we've even seen this on our towers, where the carriers come in and, and just, just one recent example, AT&amp;T on one of our towers is actually very similar design, it's, I think, a 100-foot tower. They came in and they had 300 pounds worth of antennas on there, and that was 12 panels. I'm sorry, it was nine panels. They're upgrading to 12 panels, they actually finished the upgrade, 12 panels, including eight-foot panels. So we did have to accommodate that. If we couldn't accommodate that eight-foot space, they would have had to go elsewhere. So eight-foot panels, they added six TMAs, and these are large boxes, and they weighed something like 50 pounds a piece. They added 12 remote radio heads, another very large box, about the same size, big surge suppressor and some other stuff, which I don't even remember. But it went from 300 pounds to 850 pounds worth of equipment on that, on that tower, plus the commensurate wind load that goes with that, which was significant. So that's kind of revised or structural analysis. But that's the type of equipment grade, upgrades that are going on all over the country, where the antennas that were, you know, so a carrier with six antennas that were 50-inch antennas are now going to eight-foot antennas and there are 12 of them, and there's all kinds of extra boxes and components. So we need to plan ahead for that, because we want the carrier to stay on our pole, and we don't want other poles, you know.
Are those eight-foot antennas carrying three frequency bands?
Uh, I don't know that specifically, but I know that, I could tell you that the Verizon antennas that are on this pole are cross poles. There are already basically two antennas built into one already.
Okay.
So if you want to think of it in terms of 24 antennas that are actually in the enclosures of 12. So we're already kind of there from the standpoint that you've got the cross poles in there.
My next question is, so if you had 10 feet on this pole for each carrier, so we could have co-location, basically you're, you have an eight-foot antenna, you're saying, under this new process of all the equipment needed, a close-mount won't work, because you need the antenna out, and then the-
The TMAs.
TMAs and the other radio frequency, whatever things, behind it. Is that what you're telling us?
Well, right. What we, what we basically make the carriers do is put all that equipment at the same level behind the antenna. And it's pieces of equipment that's serviceable from, from the back anyway. What you see in a lot of sites that aren't well-planned, or where, even sites where the tower owner's not watching carefully, you'll see that the pipe is being extended and the box is being shoved underneath the thing. So that also makes what was a large antenna even appear much larger, it's really two boxes. So we put everything behind the antennas, we try to tuck everything, sometimes we put mount, mounted the boxes on the pole itself at the center, right above the existing mount. So we're trying to do as much as we can to, to minimize that vertical space, so they're not encroaching on another space.
And these TMAs have to go up by the antennas?
They do.
They can't go down at the base and that.
That's correct. So I'm just telling you, that's kind of an idea what's really going on out there, and what we're seeing on, on our sites and, and other sites. There is an enlargement of equipment that's dramatic, and-
Now, what are you proposing as the extension from the pole for your antennas group?
You mean an extendability feature?
She's 104.
Six feet away? I'm just, yeah.
Oh, you mean, the, the-
Please.
Right, the plat, what it basically, the way to think about it is, is about three-
I guess let me just ask the question. Whatever you're proposing, whether it's 10 feet, 12 feet away, or whatever, how close can it be and still accommodate the TMAs or whatever behind it? Can we approach a monopole design and still have what you're arguing for?
Well, I can tell you that right now, the width of the platform, if you were to go up to one level, and there's a bar coming out and one going across, that crossbar is 12 feet long, wide. And the reason is, is the carriers like to get basically four feet of separation between each panel, so they don't interfere with each other. Now, the question is, how far can you move those four antennas in? Can you make it, instead of being four feet apart, can you make it three feet apart? Now I'm dealing with a 10-foot instead of a 12-foot. What's, what's kind of that limit? And that's really a question I'd have to ask Verizon, but it would only apply to Verizon.
You know, if it's the size of a bread box, can you put the antennas out one foot away or a foot and a half from the pole?
Saying, how far can you put the antennas out? Well, I mean, you still have to get the four antennas.
How close can you get and still have the TMAs behind them?
How far, basically, what you're, your pole, you have your bracket off, and you have your antenna here, you still need to get the TMA behind.
Right.
And the question is, if you start tamping back the antenna-
Or can it go this short?
... and push the TMA where you can't get the-
That bracket that stands off the pole-
Right.
-is only about three feet long. What makes it 12 feet wide is once it goes out three feet, then, if you actually look at this diagram, you'll see that this portion is only three feet. And actually, if you scale it, it might even be less than that. So it only sticks out a little bit. So if you're putting boxes behind here, you're already getting fairly close to the pole. Because it's, because the technician has to come up here, he has to be able to, since we don't have a platform to walk around on, he has to be able to get out on this and work on the back of those antennas.
So you're saying 12 feet, you got three feet sticking out this side, this three state, and you have the width of the pole, that's why you get the 12.
Basically, you're just-
But you're now saying that they are going to be working up on the poles, and Ron has told us that they're going to be working from computers on the ground.
Yeah. And in regard to mechanical down tilts, every site we see has mechanical down tilt brackets, even if it has electrical down tilt. They use a combination. And we see their radio data sheets, which we get for every site, they'll say, three degrees, mechanical, electrical down tilt, four degrees, and then they might have a feature where that electrical down tilt can vary. When I'm talking about mechanical, it's basically a hinge bracket that, that looks kind of like this, it's attached to the pipe, and it's, it's like a scissor. So what it does, it makes the antenna scissor out like that. So they'll do a certain amount of mechanical down tilt, which changes the physical, that just has, that just makes the antenna point in a different direction, more downward. And then they use electrical down tilt, which actually changes the, the beam characteristics itself.
Okay. Ron, have you found what-
Yes. In the, I had to use John, thank you very much. These old eyes are really bad on beam tilt. I looked at the R.C. Peterson report that was done for health and safety, and in that he specifies the antennas. For LTE, he's using a BX-A 780, 13.6 dBi. The antenna that I spoke to you about, the BX-A, the amphenol antenna-
Right.
-in that band, it's 13.0 dBi. It's an insignificant difference. It's an insignificant difference. Six tenths of a db is a rounding error. In cellular, 14.65 dBi. In cellular, 15.6 dBi. It's a push. In PCS, the Intel, 18.65 dBi, very high gain antenna. And the antenna that I spoke about, the flagpole antenna.
Here, was it part of your letter?
Yeah, it was a
This, this one?
Probably still attached. No. I think I lost my whole letter. That's what happened. Oh, good. May I approach? In the flagpole antenna, at 15.4, at, depending on which band you're in, which AWS band, 15.1, 15.4, 15.7. They're, they're in the ballpark, they're not significantly different. There is, there are some it's higher, some it's lower, but this issue of, they have to be eight foot antennas these days, as I said, that's that question. And would you go back to picture that monopole on, on the 287? I just want to point out one thing on that. Oh, here. I don't need them now. Thank you very much.
All right. Wow. It's a lot clearer in the picture, but you see that?
Yeah.
Beneath the antenna, that's a TMA. You see?
Yep.
You see this? That's a TMA. There is a TMA there. And in the picture, I see a TMA down here, but that's where a TMA is typically located right beneath the antenna. They're relatively small, they're relatively light, as I said, it's just an amplifier. There are no RRAs on this. The other interesting thing about this one that I always get a kick when carriers are telling me about coverage, look where the bottom layer of antennas are. They're in the trees.
In the trees, yeah.
Oh, no, we can't be in the trees, the coverage is terrible. You know what? They're in the trees. Why? Because they needed a site for coverage, that's all they could get, so they went in the trees. And you know what? It works.
That's not true, Ron, you know that, because a lot of the counter argument on that is that your local code, your local, yes, but your local code being required before you can build a new tower, you must use all existing available towers.
Wait, wait, I took that one myself and I had to pull up the side of the aisle and I was looking up like this. So those trees are in the foreground. If you were to look at that site from distance, it's actually a mountain and the site's built at the very peak of that and there's a little mini wall there, there's some small trees around. So if we have another year, I'll bring in sites where the antennas are in the trees because the carrier needs it.
Okay. All right, all right, all right, all right.
I'm just saying, so the, the issue about, about we're going to run out of space
But your argument is even if they have a 10 foot space and they have an eight foot antenna and it's close mounted, they can mount a TMA on the outside of the pole below the antenna and that two foot
Or, or, your, your question wasn't, it's a reasonable answer or a reasonable question and it's doable that the TMA is mounted behind the antenna. Granted, the antenna sticks out further from the pole, but it's still not out on a 12 foot arm. Grant, granted, it's not true close mount
Right.
But you've at least brought
We brought it in.
The impression in of the antenna where you can mount it beneath it. Note that the antenna is there and I, if, if you were to assume that this is a four foot antenna, or assume that it's, you know, let's assume it's a four foot antenna or six foot antenna and look at the spacing between antennas, 10 feet, classic monopole design, 10 foot separation between antenna arrays. And the reason they do that is that way they can, whenever they make a pole, they always put a hole in the pole for the cables to come out at 10 foot spaces. But I will bring a paper in presented for evidence where the antennas can be mounted as close as six inches. The antennas don't care how close they're mounted, it doesn't impact their coverage. That's done for convenience because then they can have one style of pole with a port every 10 feet. And that's where this 10 foot number came from. But in many instances, carriers can, there's no technical reason why antennas can't be located even closer than that.
I think that Ron will agree with this point, so just to flush it out a little bit more, because, because I think what, what, what hopefully is helping is you're seeing where the tensions lie between the disagreements and then you guys are going to make up your own mind as to, as to appropriate weight on that. But I think Ron will agree with me. We're proposing a four carrier pole, there are five carriers operating in this market. You're now asking us to do things that Ron is saying essentially he believes, Metro's in this market. Right, five, okay, so there are five carriers in this market, we're proposing four carriers on this pole right now.
I didn't think we said we would design for five.
Okay, so
Yeah, we've heard five.
So we designed five. Your, only makes the point even more so. Your, whether, whether Ron, we can say 104, 94, 84, 74, 64, okay? Or we can squeeze it a little bit and maybe it gets to 67 feet, okay, above grade, so we're doing nine footers instead of
Maybe get to 70 feet above grade, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're, I'm trying to find consensus here.
If you went the non, non 10 foot spacing.
When you start doing some of the close mounting, you are definitely going to need more spacing, which then does push it down and does reasonably become more difficult to co-locate everybody than your standard design.
What's the height of the tree line over there?
65.
Okay, so
So, but you're, you're, but you're
So you're still
I'm planning the exercise, what we're saying is, and I think Ron will agree with me is, it may all work out perfectly. It may to go back to my Snide comment, result in a similar situation. You're hedging, once you go away from the standard operations, as to whether it does or doesn't work out in the future. That, and I'm not, that's, that's just trying to pull out the tension and bring that out as you're figuring out, because you're trying to design for five carriers.
I don't understand your point.
Okay.
Your point, I have not caught.
Okay.
We go to a close mounted design, what's the problem?
You're going to need more space when you go close mounted.
Why?
Well, for all the things you were talking about.
We've always talked about 10 foot spacing, what I always understood.
And you don't need 10 foot spacing. I'll bring in that paper and
I understand that, but all along, I thought the proposal before us was that you would have 10 foot spacing for five carriers. Is that incorrect?
No, that is correct. What I'm, what Ron's showing is not going to allow, our belief is that you're not going to be able to get one carrier on each 10 feet, the way you're heading with the close mounted.
Why, that's my question.
Because if you close mount them too much, and if I'm listening to the, if you close mount them, if you flush mount them
Yep.
Then you got an antenna and you have to put the TDMA, the TMA underneath.
So if I have a, an eight foot antenna and the TMA is 18 inches, what is it? I haven't heard an exact dimension. I've heard of a breadbox.
They range, they're, they're more, but you also have cables.
I'm saying, everything I've seen so far, it's mostly 18.
You have cables that have to get in between, you have to get underneath, the cables are underneath, the plug ports are underneath. It's not, you can't dovetail it.
Okay.
So 20, but then
You understand, I think the question is
We're getting way into the, into the weeds here.
But you have to understand this because this is a potential shortfall of going other than the standard in order to, you're saying, if you, if you believe that there's a benefit aesthetically to close mounting, there is a trade off on co-location, co-locatability down the future line. That's our position. John will articulate that.
That's your position, okay.
And obviously, we want to get all the carriers on the pole and not disenfranchise a carrier who's going to want to go build their own tower. The question is as far as how much can you close contact? I mean, I think it should be pretty obvious that if you have to split your antennas on multiple levels, you're just eating up other spaces. So then it's a matter of, okay, how, if you've got this 12 foot wide piece and it's a triangle, how tight can that triangle get? Which means all the antennas start to move in and still be able to mount your TMAs on the back and service all the equipment.
And do they have to be mounted on the back? First break that argument and prove to me you have to mount them on the back.
Well, and I think, I think that's their ideal, but the bottom line is, there are flagpole towers all over the place, there are tree towers, I, other towers work, so I, I'm not sure that I believe that that's the only option that's going to work in this case.
A lot of the flagpole towers that we see put out there, Dick by the Wilds carriers, they say it's a four carrier pole and they have, three of them are for that same carrier and they, and they leave one little space left over for co-location. They say, oh, we left a co-location spot, but they're taking up three. And that's what's really happening out there.
I guess what we're trying to say to you is what's going to happen is Verizon's going to take this, they're going to make their install, the next carrier will come in, you're not going to wind up with a fifth carrier. One of the fifth carriers is going to wind up in front of you testifying in X period of time that they can't use that pole and Mr. Graves isn't necessarily going to be able to refute it and you're going to wind up with a new pole. Well, you can't extend it without getting a variance, so if they give in for a new pole, that wouldn't need variances that would have priority under the zoning law.
Yeah, I guess it's this question that I've been having in the back of my mind and I keep forgetting. Suppose we do a close mounted design, does that, suppose this technology changes and we now have to put these things on arms? Is that a problem?
It is if it's, if it's designed without the arms, it would have to be pre-designed. For like the site I mentioned that we went from
Can't just draw a hole and just arm through it?
Well, no, no, it's, the tower that I mentioned that we had, went from 300 pounds to 850 pounds for AT&amp;T, that site was built in 2006. At the time, when I designed that site and determined what the loading was, I looked at the prior years and the growth of the antennas, I looked at comparables in the European market, where their antennas went to over a period of time, and I determined what that loading should be. So I kind of projected out loading, which at the time I thought was extreme, you know, I thought it was like four times what the, the, everyone else was building towers for. But when they came on, on the site, they were able to do their upgrades, stay on the site and it didn't impact.
This is what I'm suggesting, you could certainly plan it for a heavier load and it became necessary, move the antennas away. I guess I'm still looking for it. Why do they have to be aware? Do they have to be right now? I mean, you're, you're telling me Verizon has asked you to change a site because of what technology they're not using, the eight foot antenna.
Right, Jim, I don't mean to cut, cut you short by any means, but I do believe we're going round and round and round in circles at this point.
That's what I'm trying to get the point, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, I, I, I hear your point.
And I can ask Verizon how tight
You know what, honestly, it is now 10 to 9. We need to get to some public comments because I think, believe that public, especially those people who live close by these, might offer some insight into us in terms of what they might prefer to see and ultimately that's what we should be listening to.
Okay.
So, all right, so unless there's really important questions from the board at this point, I really would like it to open up that any of the neighbors of the site or anybody, you know, would like to come forward and, and give us your opinion on what you've heard, we'd appreciate it. I do, will ask that, if you can speak first, but then please make it a point to sign in just so our minutes reflect your name correctly.
My name is Kristen Sinkew from Corbly, Gartland and Rapleye. We are the attorneys who represent an adjoining property owner, Mr. and Mrs. Verta, Verta Chong, sorry. I'm pinch hitting tonight.
All right, I'm just going to ask you, you got to speak into the microphone.
Sorry. Alan Rapleye is the attorney who's here, I'm not completely familiar with this application, but an emergency arose that took him away. Very briefly, is there anything in the file that depicts what the actual pole being proposed by the applicant will look like at the proposed site?
As you can just tell, we're still in the midst of what that whole discussion.
Like I said, I apologize, I'm just
No, but she's asking, there are
Oh, there is, there is a plan in there, but we're, we're, we're just
30 different shots.
Not, not the balloon, an actual
Yeah, I guess.
There are photos, photo simulations that would reflect from various addresses what that, what the tower is proposed to look like.
And they're planning to vet into protocol and get a meeting on what shots and what locations should be taken.
I'll take your word, I just don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point, I just wanted a quick answer. Our other point is, we submitted a letter to the board July 10th expressing our clients and I believe other neighboring property owners who are here from the Eagle Ridge subdivision regarding the property access.
Right, right.
To our knowledge, it has not been responded to yet, we just wanted that noted for the record.
I have it right here.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we did receive it, but
Okay.
We responded to it in our letter.
Okay, we haven't seen your letter as far as I know. No problem.
And when we, when we, our response to Cino would reference both the whole change case and the Schwanrodde case, we said your issues were those state issues that both were a state firm, I, are proceeding, or is only charged with enforcing his own code and that's the orders that they can impolvent.
I did hear your
And therefore, your claims, whether they have merit or don't have merit, don't belong in this form and should be adjudicated by its own board, its own jurisdiction is relative to a special program.
Okay, I don't necessarily agree with that point, but I understand that they, it has been responded to. We would just request that the public hearing remain open at this point to address all of these concerns and I believe concerns that were raised by Mr. Meyer that may or may not have been adequately raised, addressed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, my question is again about access, right? And if they don't have proper access, I understand it's, he's saying it's a real estate matter, but that's a, that's a matter of dispute.
Right, and, and you know what? We have our, our attorneys are reviewing the access, are reviewing the case, we are going to wait until we get a determination from them that the access is appropriate. Okay, so we understand that issue, we seriously don't need to revisit again, we're very much aware of that issue, okay?
Okay, thank you.
If there's anything else though, especially if you want to weigh in on what it's going to look like, that's
That, that's what I was going to say.
Fine.
So what I would say is
Thank you.
Definitely close mount.
Definitely what?
Close mount.
Okay.
We actually live close by, we're going to look at it every day. So I think, I appreciate you asking us for opinion, it should be close mount as well as looking like a tree. I think it is going to disappear in the tree line and I think it should look like a tree. So that's what we would like. And of course, in this case, if the axis being in the front of the golf course, I'm assuming that and that's why I'm proposing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you to sign in, please?
Sure.
Hi, how are you? My name is Catherine Menachino, I'm a Realtor Prudential and I live on Katy's Way in the subdivision that they're speaking about behind where the tower's proposed to be.
Right.
Last time that we met, you asked for some studies, some facts on possible property value declines and past cas, case history of that and I brought that for you. There are several studies that have been done and actually they've been published in the Appraisers Journal, which is like an industry appraisers magazine that they all get. So I brought that for you and highlighted some information about the decline. I have three here that say that there is a decline. They vary in percentages, so it depends on, you know, the location, how far away you are from it.
Are, are they in New York or are they?
Um, no, most of them are not in New York, actually, they're all over either, even some of them are international, but some are in Florida and things like that. I think that, you know, it's, it's like a stigma that's all over the place, I don't think it's something you can generalize to any state.
No, but I, I certainly think that different real estate markets are, are going to reflect on the value very differently, so
Yes, but these actually address specifically cell phone towers in, being installed. They're not about the market itself, they're actually specifying that there was a, no tower before, now there's a tower, what kind of mathematical difference is there in the sales statistics?
Okay.
So it's actually like pointed at that fact.
The information will certainly be helpful.
So I'll give that to you. And also, just to share some personal info, personally, I've experienced since our last meeting, that one Realtor from Prudential called me, because I live there, asking me if a house that's gone up for sale on my street was because of the cell phone tower sign that has gone up. Asking me, do you know what's going on? You know, I might have people interested, but they're scared, they don't want to buy it because of the sign. And was it because, did he put it on the market because of that? So it's not my listing and I'm not at liberty to say. However, it just goes to show that there's stuff going on with the buyer perception that just the sign is causing people distress and questions. Another story that happened is a Houlihan Lawrence agent, actually, I heard through a colleague of mine, drove some people to the subdivision and when they saw the big sign there, said, turn around, I'm not going to buy in here. And they turned around and went elsewhere. So it's not even that there's a cell phone tower there already, but actually this negative perception of our community is already starting. And I think that that's really detrimental to not only our area, but the whole East Fishkill. Like I said at the last meeting, any of the sales that go, that occur in our community become comparables for the rest of the community. So if the new construction starts selling drastically lower by us, in other places in East Fishkill, that will be reflected and when appraisers do their appraisals, our houses will come up as comps, but much lower.[1694.12] That being said, there's nothing in an appraisal that says there's a cell phone tower next to these houses, and that makes it different. It's really a subjective kind of emotional stigma that people have, some people feel against it, some people don't mind. So I would say the majority of people do mind, but it's nothing that you can really quantify, let's say, it's an emotion. I'm gonna give you this, and I also have one other thing in here, which is, which is also subjective, but it's all these different real estate agents' opinions on, from Zillow dot com that say what they think a percentage would be off the decline of a property value based upon the installation of a cell phone tower. So I'll give you all of this.
Thank you.
I'm, yeah, we appreciate the research. I, I am going to offer a counter, that there are some people who would say that they're not necessarily interested in a home because it has poor cell service. So it is very subjective, I'm not defending one way or the other, I'm just saying that you can look at this certainly in multiple ways. So Pam, if you don't mind, I'm gonna give these to you, and if you could make copies of them and make sure the board gets them, I'd appreciate it. Yes, gentlemen and all?
Hi, I'm Tom Doyle, I live in Dogwood Knolls, I was here last month. I do want to say, I did make a mistake talking about the poles, they are steel. The wooden ones are thirty-five foot poles.
Right.
The transmission ones are steel, I don't know when they put them in steel, but I know they were wood at one time. I live in Dogwood Knolls, like I said, and I've seen a lot of pictures, and I'm beginning to believe that the most, a regular pole would be more better than a tree.
Okay.
Okay? I am a little basing, a little bit on the one on the hutch. But again, the one on the hutch is not in a subdivision. How much planning or bickering back and forth went on? Or did the state come in and just say, we're gonna put a tower on the hutch? I mean, nobody lives on the hutch.
Right.
Okay? There was also one on the Palisades Parkway, same thing, they both look like junk, okay? But I think, if, is there a height, we're gonna go with this pole, one hundred and ten feet?
That's what they're asking.
Okay, does it have to have a light on it?
No.
For aviation? We're okay. So, my opinion, as a resident in the area, I think the less conspicuous one would be a regular straight pole. Naturally, the closest we could get with the antennas, the less bulk you're gonna see. And I just think eventually, that, that pole is gonna just be part of the aesthetics. But a tree is never, a tree is always gonna look like a tree out of place. And soon as I come out of my house, I'm gonna look and I'm gonna see the top of a tree. With a pole, I'm gonna see it in the beginning, and I'm not gonna see a lot of it according to the pictures, and I think that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Do you have a preference on color?
Excuse me?
Do you have a preference on color?
No, I'll leave that to the experts, but naturally, something that's gonna blend in. I mean, the trees are green in summer, they're brown in winter, so what do you do, you know? The other thing is that these gentlemen here represent the owner, and he wants to put up a cell tower to make money, okay? This gentleman here came with all kinds of specs and everything on what you can do, so what I can't understand is, why can't the board, and maybe you will, come up with a way, this is what we want?
Right.
If they still want, if they don't want to put that tower up, then they don't put it up, but this is what we want. But I understand it's technology, just like windmills all over the place, it's gonna go up, I'm sure. I don't know if you have, is there, is it possible it might not go up? I don't know how the board actually works. Do you always approve an application after you narrow it down to the best for the residents?
Well, there's a, there's a lot of federal law which restricts what we can consider, so-
Okay.
But, yeah.
So I would say it's gonna go up, so the best way, the best designed pole for the residents of the area is what we would like. Okay?
Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Dana Sabrowski, we live on Glen's Way, abutting the golf course. And I want to point out two things, one, we get perfect cell phone service up there, just for the record. And two, during this two-hour debate, it wasn't hard to Google hundred-and-ten-foot towers that look like trees, and they do actually blend in to the tree coverage. So I don't believe that the picture that was shown was the best representation of what it would look like. So I just wanted to, that to be noted. We feel that a tree would, would blend into the cover that is by our cul-de-sac. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, um, it's a pleasure of the board. We, we still have an access issue that's not, I, I understand, it's not-
I'm not saying anything.
It's not an issue that this board is working on, it's an issue that the town attorneys are working on. So we are ultimately, you know, I think we have to wait for the outcome of that, whether we close the public hearing in the meantime. I, I just don't, that's what I'm looking for, guidance from the board.
Well, if we close it, we have to have a decision.
Within sixty-two days. But it, but that condition could be conditional on getting the other, the access issue resolved.
One more question about aesthetics, as I beat this dead horse. If we go with a tree design, doesn't that give you what you want with the extension on the arms that's hidden?
I'm sorry, you just repeat that.
Do the arms of the tree-
Design.
Get all the functionality, but you dress it up as a tree.
Gets you, gets you the functionality.
You have to make sure that the branches would extend beyond the, the antennas. So what happens if you looked at it from the top, you've got that triangle.
Right.
Now you have to kind of draw a circle that gives you coverage all around there, and you went up to a much bigger area.
My next question is as to whether we close the public hearing or not. Is do, if we're gonna consider that, do you want to present actual figures for us to consider as to how appropriate a tree design would be? Do you want to present anything more on that?
Well, would you be interested if we go back to Verizon and ask them the question of, you know, how close those antennas can be?
That would be extremely helpful.
If we say, if we go back to them and say, well, we can't get closer than two feet, and then I can come back to you and say, all right, well, we can find a mount that's, you know, six feet or eight feet instead of twelve feet, you know? I can't make that decision, that's something that they have to tell us from an engineering standpoint, how close that can be.
I'm asking if you want that opportunity. I obviously have been beating this drum. I would like as much information as we could possibly have, and I think there's a little bit of a vacuum that still exists as to what information you guys could supply. So if you say you're done, my inclination is to close the public hearing and wrap this up. If you want to supply, supply that information, so I'm a little bit more informed and have a better basis for your opinion, I'd like to give you that opportunity.
Yeah, I think we'd like to do that information, we'll be first on your agenda next one, anyway, as a public hearing. We'll submit it within, as much lead time as we possibly can, and that way, hopefully, you could be in a position to close and act if it, if it's appropriate. For those of you who drive through from Westchester through Selmers, Whitehall Corners, one hundred and thirty-five, there's a seven-eleven right there. Look back at the Amato Farm property. There is a tower, a tree tower, that is, I think many would argue as about as amazing as you can get. And about as amazing as far as you can get, as far as attempts to stealth and hide, and-
What year was that put in?
Eight months ago, not even.
And you're saying it's ugly?
I, I, no, what I'm gonna s- no, I'm not gonna say that. What I'm gonna say is this, is I think that given the nature of the installation, I, I truly believe, I mean, a gentleman actually articulated my, my feelings on the aesthetic, spoke before. We've gotten used to a lot of utility infrastructure in our lives. There are historic downtowns with telephone poles that are supposed to look like it was in the eighteen-thirties, but they weren't telephone poles. Then we've gotten used to, grown up with certain things and accepted it. And there's a difference between how different generations accept different technologies as part of their aesthetic landscape, that's really what I'm saying. And I, my feeling is, is that there was no reason to do that there, and it wasn't necessary. And I don't think the views here warranted, but that's my aesthetic.
But, but every time I drive up six eighty-four and I see those cell towers, the one in Bedford, and the, it's just, it's just horrifying to see that.
That could've been saved too, that Holy Trinity, they're three towers, maybe.
Right, so anyway, let's, what's, what's your, what's the pleasure of, of the applicant?
And I'd also say that we do have a site in Pasadena, New York, it's off at the north end of Butten Lake. Some of those views we've used as part of our photo simulations that we've extracted to superimpose.
Okay.
And we've shown you some photos of that site through the woods and from the distance. So if, if anyone wants to see that pole in person, I'd be happy to, you know, show, or all the board members what that looks like, or I could tell you where it is. And you could see, and that's a situation where the neighbors were very concerned what it would look like, and actually, the neighbors who were the closest can't even see it.
Okay.
And that's a standard pole.
It's a standard pole, brown, just like we're talking about here, it's actually a hundred and fifty feet tall.
Is that the one that was in the picture that you gave us, that, when you said find it?
You can look through the trees, and you can get back on, on the other side of the lake, and you can look across, you can see it, and then see what it looks like in real life.
Okay.
So we're gonna make a motion-
Hold on one second, Mr. Graves.
Just a couple of more things before you do that, and just for full disclosure, I'm working for the town of Patterson on reviewing a Verizon application in that town where they're attempting to build a flagpole.
Okay.
Right in the center of town, a two-carrier pole. And I'm doing my best to, to help the board through engineering, understand and the applicant, why they can't go to Mr. Arthur's Tower because it's already in town. So I certainly don't have anything against Mr. Arthur or his monopoles. What I look for is just the right thing to do.
Right.
If a structure is existing, to utilize that structure if it permits colocation. But what I said, when I, when I look at this, I learn, here's Verizon, a flagpole, antennas are close mounted, two layers, not six layers. That's all, two layers. And, and if you do request information about how wide Verizon wants to go, I think you also have to go beyond that and say, okay Verizon, when are you gonna bring in some of your small antennas? Some of your four footers, as opposed to your eight footers and six footers? Being that you're using them in other municipalities, why can't you use them here? I think it's gotta be two issues, close mounting and how big the antennas are, and can you use diplexed or triplexed antennas in this installation? Because while it's, it's interesting, and I'm always concerned about future colocation, the applicant here is Verizon. There's no other record of any other carrier expressing interest in this, and there's nothing to consider. All I can look at is the application before you, which is Verizon, and that's all I'm trying to focus on.
Understood, but certainly our, it's in our best interest to try to assure-
To have colocation, absolutely.
That there's colocation, so we don't get additional towers.
And I believe in colocation too, you bet.
Right.
Yep, that's why I'm trying to do it in Patterson.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to September twelfth?
Just one comment before I do, make sure you try to address Mr. Graves' comments in your proposal next time. In terms of the antenna size and what Verizon wants and how close you get. And your comments about moving towards eight foot as to why Verizon may want that, if they have comments about that, I'd appreciate it.
Do you think they could also bring pictures of the tree poles that I showed you on that website? If they go to that and then make a projection so people can see them?
I think they can bring even pictures of trees that they've done themselves, since they've already acknowledged that they've done that, so.
I mean, those were, those were-
And I'd appreciate trees that were done within the last two years, as opposed to trees that might have been done ten or twelve years ago.
We can bring what was suggested, it's a website.
Right.
Everybody, everybody has access.
Okay, so do-
With those comments, so moved that this be adjourned.
Is there a second?
A second?
All in favor? All right, thank you. Item number three, oh, we're changing the guard here. Thank you, Pearl. And we need to get some of our other board members back in, Aziz might be here at this point, so I'll just, he is? Okay. So thank you. I just don't like it. And for those of you who are sticking with us, we very much appreciate your patience. Obviously, working through all the information and the issues associated with any cell tower views is, it's a tedious job, but we gotta make sure that the decisions that we make here are the best for this town. Well, the problem is, at the last two public hearings, we have had so many people come out for their, for their application. Obviously, they didn't have the same response this time around, but in previous nights, this room has been full just with the folks associated with their application and the other cell tower application that we have, so. All right, so we're gonna, let's get moving ahead here, because we now have our quorum back. So we're on public hearing number three, appeal three five eight seven, GNS Group Limited. GNS Group Limited, ninety-seven North Clinton Street, Poughkeepsie, is requesting a twenty-nine-point-five square foot variance of sign area to allow a forty-two square foot sign for Liberty Mutual Insurance on the face of the building at Neshawat Square, nine hundred Route three seventy-six, Wapinders Falls, pursuant to section one fifty-three of the zoning ordinance. Hi, how are you?
I'm good, just letting you know, I just went out, threw my cell phone away, no.
I can't say I blame you. All right, again, at last, at last month's meeting, for the purpose of the public, the public hearings are generally the, they're also the applications this board has already done a review on. We now feel it's appropriate for, for us to get public input, because you guys live near these developments, or in this case, this building, and might be able to offer better guidance for us if we're not necessarily as familiar with it. Reviews are, are, in most cases, will be applications that we have not seen yet, so we'll spend more time on those. So in this case, Liberty Mutual is in the Neshawat Square Plaza. Because the sign ordinance changed subsequent to when most of the other signs in that plaza were put up. The other signs are by their grandfathered in, are allowed to be larger. Liberty Mutual's sign is, is by the new ordinance is gonna be significant, has been significantly reduced. It actually looks at, almost, in my opinion, actually looks out of place in, in line with the rest of the signs on that building. So we did do a review last month, are there any questions from board members? I do need to open the public hearing, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I always look at Aziz and remember that. All in favor?
All.
Aye. Okay, so any questions from board members? Is there anyone here to speak for or against a twenty-nine-point-five square foot variance of a sign area to allow a forty-two square foot sign for the Liberty Mutual Insurance office space at the Neshawat Square, nine hundred Route three seventy-six? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hereby move in reference to appeal three five eight seven, made by GNS Group LTD, ninety-seven North Clinton Street, Poughkeepsie, New York, requesting a twenty-nine-point-five square foot variance of sign area to allow a forty-two square foot sign for Liberty Mutual Insurance on the face of the building at Neshawat Square, nine hundred Route three seventy-six, Wapinders Falls, pursuant to section one fifty-three of the zoning ordinance. And the board having considered the fact that this request is primarily due to a change in the law that occurred after the building was erected, and most of the signs for the existing locations having been already approved for the prior size, and thereby, this smaller sign would look out of place and actually cause perhaps an aesthetic disconnect. I move that said, appeal be granted.
And seeker?
And there's been a type two action, a seeker and no further action being needed by the board.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pam is actually not here, so Lisa, you have that, you have the record for the minutes of the vote. Okay. All right, so your appeal is granted.
Okay, I just have one really fast question. The backside of the building is mirrored size, same as the front, and all of the tenants have put their signs on the back. Do I need to do all of this again? They came in after the fact, Liberty Mutual, asking for that, or can I, have they proven, just give you a check?
John is, I think that's a separate-
No, it's the exact same sign, and, and both, the Zoomy has done the same thing, and the Medical Place has done the same thing. It's a mirrored back from the front, they have access parking lot back there. Whatever you need me to do, I just want to know what I need you to do.
But in essence, your variance is not then twenty-nine and a half feet, it's actually fifty-nine feet.
Right, so I need to just go through the same thing?
Correct.
All right, I'm gonna make them wait a few months till you get through all of this.
Well, they're happy because you don't have the street location off the back.
Well, and, and where they are, their, their location's so further down, and they're quite significantly away from Robinson Lane, so I'm not sure that it would, it's as-
You know what it is? I think it's, it's not for Robinson Lane, there's a lot of traffic, there's a huge parking lot behind, there's more parking. So they're thinking people that are coming to the dry cleaners are going, that's where they're gonna get their advertising, if they're not going down three seventy-six.
But in that case, they're probably driving much slower through the parking lot to begin with, to be able to read the signs in the first place.
Yeah.
As opposed to the visual impact on the front of the building along three seventy-six.
Right.
Is gonna be significantly different.
Right.
So you might want to rethink that.
So it, so they could, we could just apply for a normal sign permit of twelve square feet on the back, and it wouldn't require a meeting?
We have to be sure you're not in violation of the sign ordinance.
I'll, I'll call, I'll talk to Mary.
Have a conversation with Mary.
All right.
Okay?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number four, appeal three five eight eight Altman, Jared Altman, two sixty-one Lafayette Avenue, Portland Manor, is requesting a special permit for an accessory professional office, an attorney in his home, which is under construction at forty-two East Tilden Place, Hopewell Glen, Hopewell Junction, pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You are, as, again, as explained previously, we have reviewed this application. This gentleman is building a new home in the Hopewell Glen subdivision. He is requesting to be able to use part of the first floor space for professional offices. He would have no employees using there, you're not gonna have a sign, there's no separate entrance, so really-
No structural alter, alterance.
Yeah, the facade of the home is going to look the same as it would have been if it was being used as a private residence.
That's correct.
Which the bulk of the home is going to be used as the private residence.
It will be my home, that's right.
Right, so, um, any questions or comments from board members? No?
Also, we had looked at blocking and what do you expect in terms of clients coming in?
Maybe one at a time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much, how often?
I'm not planning on, this came up briefly when we did the initial review, and it-
Right. But again, your neighbors-
It's primarily, it's primarily my home.
You might have neighbors here, so that's why some of the questions we'll ask, just to make sure the neighbors.
You have an office, right?
It's primarily my home, there's no space for anyone else to work there other than myself.
Right.
You've seen the plans where I marked out what I was gonna do. I did set aside what is technically the home's dining room as a potential conference area. I did set aside what is technically the home's dining room as a potential conference area, but I'm not gonna do real estate closings there. I might do a two-party deposition, so my driveway might get filled, but that's about the extent of it.
Okay.
And that would be infrequent at that.
I understood you testifying, but the point is, you have room for four or five cars on your-
I have room, I have easily room for four cars. And I am on a cul-de-sac, so if God forbid it was to overflow, it wouldn't impede the flow of traffic anywhere.
Plus, you have garage space.
Yes, I do. My cars would be in the, my cars would be in the garage.
That's onsite parking as well.
I just wanted that on the record, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the application for appeal from Mr. Altman to request a special permit for an accessory professional office in his home, which is under construction at 42 East Tilden Place? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
With my voice, the people, the people have to make the motions.
You wanna do it, Aziz?
Okay. This is Appeal 3588, Jared Altman.
Right.
261 Lafayette Avenue, Portland Manor, New York, is requesting a special permit for an accessory professional office, attorney in his home, which is under construction at 42 East Tilden Place, Hopewell Glen, Hopewell Junction, pursuant to Section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. And ZBA, after reviewing the application and holding a public hearing, have determined that it does not create an, um, um-
Adverse.
-adverse environment for the neighborhood, and the applicant is not to have any employees and will have a very limited number of individuals accessing the premises, and this is a type two sec, action under seeker, so no further review is, is needed, and so hereby request that the motion, the request be, appeal be granted.
Oh, can we also just clarify that there will be no sign marking this professional office because of the deed restriction associated with the Hopewell Glen?
As amended.
Right. Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Your motion carries?
Thank you, members.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Alright, item number six, Appeal 3591 Survey, Jeffrey, Jeffrey Survey, 15 Railroad Avenue, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 47-foot front line variance for an existing enclosed porch, a nine-foot sideline variance, and a 42-foot rear line variance for an existing eight-foot by 10-foot shed, and an expansion of a non-conforming use property is in I-1 zone pursuant to Section 194-107 and 194-16 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Survey had received a 44-foot front line variance for a proposed six-foot by 10-foot porch in 2005. Did I skip one?
We trumped Mr. Trump.
Yeah.
My apologies, sorry.
We trumped Mr. Trump.
Can we, thank you. I was just trying, I'm trying to get caught up with everybody here, so.
Blaming a playthrough.
My, my apologies, okay. Um, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
For Mr. Survey. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so according to our previous discussion, you had been before this board, you got a variance to be able to put a six-foot by 10-foot deck on the front of your home?
From porch.
From porch, thank you.
Correct.
Um, back in 2005, for whatever reason, that was not what was constructed, it was that it ended up being enclosed?
Right, and two-foot over.
And, right, and expanded slightly, but however, the, what you, what is there is now certainly in keeping with the neighborhood and the other properties that are on Railroad Avenue.
Correct.
So, in terms of it being a detriment to the neighborhood, it actually-
Improved it, yes.
It, it actually fits in well with what is there. Any questions from board members? No? See, is any, would anybody here like to speak for or against the application by Mr. Survey, 15 Railroad Avenue, Hopewell Junction, for the various variances that he's requested? No, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And?
I can-
Go ahead.
Okay. This is Appeal number 3591, applicant is Jeffrey Survey. It's a, requested a 47-foot front line variance for an existing enclosed porch, 19, 19-feet sideline-
Nine foot.
Oh, okay, should be corrected, okay. Nine-foot sideline variance and a 42-feet rear line variance for an existing eight-by-10 shed, and an expansion of a non-conforming use property is in a I-1 zone. Location is 15 Railroad Avenue, Hopewell Junction. The applicant has requested, whereas, oh, okay, the applicant has requested a zoning board for a 47-front line variance for an existing eight-by-10 enclosed porch, and a nine-foot sideline variance, and a 42-feet rear line variance for an existing eight-feet by 10-feet shed, and an expansion of a non-conforming use. As the property is in an I-1 zone pursuant to Section 194-107 and 194-16 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this is a type two action under seeker and no further action is required, and, and-
Keep him, keep him.
Okay, whereas a legal notice was published in Southern Dutchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on August 8, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 14, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the grounding of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties, since most of the neighboring properties have similar forches, and houses in the neighborhood were all built prior to zoning, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, since the existing house is 10-feet by, 10-feet from the front property line and is on a .27 acre lot, the variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, or other houses in the neighborhood have similar structures. The difficulty in adhering to the area requirements of the law was not created by something the applicant did or proposes to do, since the house was built prior to zoning on, and now undersized lot. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Jeffrey Survey for a 47-foot front line variance for an existing enclosed porch, a nine-foot sideline, and a 42-feet rear line variance for an existing eight-feet by 10-foot shed, and an expansion of non-conforming use, as the property is in a I-1 zone pursuant to Section 194-107 and 194-16 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized members of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Resolution seconded by?
Do we have a second?
No second.
Seconded by Tara. Vote says follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries.
Okay, do I need to, well, pick up anything, or?
Pam?
I'll mail you the decision and do you have any-
Thank you.
Contact the president.
Alright, now, I'm sorry. Now, we will go back to item number five, Appeal 3589, Trump National Golf Club, Hudson Valley, Trump National Golf Club, Hudson Valley, 178 Stormville Road, is requesting a three-foot height variance for a seven-foot front entrance gate, as well as a variance to the 250-foot setback requirement for the existing special permit pursuant to Sections 194-98 and 194-59D3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, again, we reviewed this at our last meeting. For the, for the benefit of public, can you just take us through your, what your request was?
Sure, our, our two items were requests to add an existing, existing gate that is currently on the property to change it to a, a larger gate, and we're asking for a variance for the addition of that, as well as a lean-to on the back of our maintenance building. Looking for a variance for, for that as well.
I didn't hear that much, too.
Elite?
Oh, my, I'm sorry.
No, that's-
No, I'm sorry, that was the, excuse me, that's in front of the planning board, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But you wanna go-
Get tried, though.
It's been a long day for me, it's been a long day for me, too, after the cell phones.
But you wanna go for a three-foot height variance for a seven-foot front-
We can do that, too.
Three-foot height variance and a four-second-
And it's a new gate with stone pillars?
Yes, correct.
To replace the existing gate at the front entrance?
Yes.
We talked about fire access, trucks and-
Correct, they still have the same, it's the same lock that they have currently on the, on the new gate, so it'll be the same.
And it doesn't change, obviously, the width so they can get through it.
Correct.
And it doesn't affect any sight distance viewing or anything like that?
It does not, correct.
Okay.
Looking at the picture that you've offered to us, you were, it seems to be total of four gates, a central gate that has two panels and two side gates. Do the side gates also open, or is this for aesthetic purposes?
They do not, only aesthetics.
Okay.
Other two main gates in the middle open.
Okay.
And there was a particular reason why you're asking for these changes, as I recall the review.
Uh, two items, one is for the aesthetic look, the, what we have currently is just a simple construction gate that, quite frankly, doesn't protect from anyone coming in, but this is a much larger and much more obtrusive, you can drive around the existing gate, driving up the cobblestone and around the grass, where, as you can see in the picture, it protects either side of the property.
Right.
But you were having some problems there, weren't you?
Correct.
Alright, any other questions from board members?
No.
Did we open this public hearing?
No, we didn't, we didn't, we opened the public hearing, but we didn't open up our conference.
We did open it, sorry. So, is there anyone here to speak for or against the Trump National Golf Club, Hudson Valley, request for a three-foot height variance for a seven-foot front entrance gate, as well as a variance to the 250-foot setback requirement for the existing special permit? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And motion?
I can-
And no comma and a lean-to, correct?
What?
No comma and a lean-to, okay.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
You're not done yet. You're not done yet.
You may be back.
That's right, that's right.
Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant has applied for a zoning board for a three-foot height variance for a seven-foot front entrance gate, as well as a variance for the 250-foot setback requirement for the existing special permit pursuant to Section 194-98 and 194-59D3 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type two action under seeker and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on August 8, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 14, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as a proposed front entrance gate is a security feature, and as part of the original special permit, the applicant had to maintain a 250-foot setback with, which a variance is also being requested. The variance requested is not substantial, as the gate, gate will fit the character of the use of the property. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The difficulty in adhering to the area requirement of the law was not created by something the applicant did or proposes to do. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeal, appeals hereby approves the request made by Trump National Golf Club, Hudson Valley, for a three-foot height variance for a seven-foot front entrance gate, as well as a variance to the 250-foot setback requirement for the existing special permit pursuant to Section 194-98 and 194-59D3 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote says follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, your motion carries. Thank you. My apologies again.
That's what I heard.
Alright, item number seven, Appeal 3592, Anabi Quality Dental Care, Sandra Anabi Quality Dental Care is requesting a 18-foot, square foot variance of sign area for a proposed second wall sign at their building located at 260 Lake Walton Road, Hopewell Junction, pursuant to Section 153 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
And I just, for the record, I recuse myself from this proceeding, so.
Okay. So, all in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, for the record, we did review this at the last meeting, you have, I understand, bought the building?
Yes.
The old Mark Auto, Auto Parts Store, and it's a slightly weird building in that the back of the building faces Lake Walton Road and the front faces the, the plaza, or the parking area inside, and so there is a rather large sign on the out, facing Lake Walton Road, so people certainly-
The same sign that was always there.
Yeah, understood, but it's, it's, it's a significant sign that's there, so it clearly, someone driving down Lake Walton Road can clearly, can clearly see that sign. The issue, though, becomes that because of the zoning, of the sign ordinance requirements, thus, there's only so many square foot allotted to that building for signs. And so, obviously, the size of the sign in the front affects the ability to put signage in the back, but because people must drive into the back and they need to be able to find your entrance, it certainly is appropriate for you to have additional signage in the back. What we did discuss last time was the dimensions of it, what really needed to be on that sign so that we could, we worked with you to minimize the, the actual request for the, the sign, and ultimately, you know, working through everybody's efforts, this is what was, this is what we came up with. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Is there anything else you'd like to offer to my summary? No, okay.
I had asked you to, you know, not to exceed, but I guess you, you are still going to stay with 18 square foot variance?
You offered that.
Okay, now, just, I, I'm just trying to recollect, so because-
No, I, I came in for less, you offered the-
Eighteen, okay.
Yeah.
As long, as long as we're on the same page that this is the maximum you're, you're going to be getting.
Okay.
If that's, if you, that's acceptable, then that's my-
Did we discuss doing 24 for three total signs?
That's what I thought, I thought 18 here. I thought it was 24.
For three total signs.
Nice, you wrote down 18.
But I-
Any, she's requesting anything larger than six square feet. So she's requesting 24, the 18 feet is the variance, the difference between the six and the eighteen feet is the variance, the difference between the six and the.
What she's allowed, okay.
Right.
Okay.
I didn't, I, when we left here, you had to say twenty-four. I was very happy with that.
Right, but that, yeah, that's the total square footage that you're allowed. The variance, we, we have to give you the extra eighteen feet.
That is right, yes.
Okay?
So, in the end, in the end, you'll have twenty-four square feet?
More than enough.
Okay.
All right. Any questions or comments, other questions from board members? Is there anyone here to speak for or against Dr. Anabi's Quality Dental Care sign requesting an eighteen square foot variance to the sign area? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, this is an appeal number thirty-five nine, ninety-one. Applicant is.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-one?
Ninety-two.
It says after ninety-one.
That's a, that's a draft.
Okay.
Ninety-two.
Thirty-five ninety-two. Anabi Quality Dental, um, the name of the project is, they're requesting a eighteen-foot, s- square foot variance of sign for a proposed second wall sign, uh, at a location of 260 Lake Walton Road. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas applicant has requested to the zoning board for an eighteen-foot square, square foot variance of sign area for the proposed second wall sign at their building pursuant to section 153 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this section is a type 2 action seeker and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Texas News, the official newspaper of the town, on August 8, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeal held a public hearing on August 14, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. The difficulty in adhering to the area requirement of the law was not created by something the applicant did or proposes to do. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby approves the request made by Sandra Anabi Quality Dental Care for an eighteen-foot, square-foot sign, variance of the sign area for a proposed second wall sign at their building pursuant to section 153 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a co- copy be sent to the owner, applicant. Uh, resolution, second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim is recused. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself. Aye, your motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are now on reviews. There's no further public hearings for the evening. Um, our first review is actually an older one. We saw this a number of months ago. It's actually Appeal 3560 Stevens, James and Carol Stevens, 174 Cross Road, Stormville, are requesting a variance to allow a proposed shed in their side yard pursuant to section 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance. All right, this is, this is an application that when we, last year, I want to say like last November, maybe, October or November?
Long time ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. You actually have a rear, your, your rear yard is in a, a, a wetland, I guess. It's, it's in a water age.
It's way back, but the shed's gonna be in the buffer zone, just a little bit, the buffer zone, that's all.
And so we actually told you when you were here, you had to go to DEC to get their permission, and you actually got their permission. Board members might not have a copy of their application with you right at the present time, so Pam has given me the file folder here. And Ashley, you know what, Mr. Stevens, some of the board members now are on the board, didn't have your original application, you know, probably never saw your original application, so that's, we're just gonna, gotta spend a couple of minutes with this in terms of what you were asking for. Um, we did review this. Your, your shed is, you're certainly within the appropriate side yard and, and rear yard setbacks. Your issue really was that you were in the buffer zone. Um, there are extra copies here, so I can hand these.
It's gonna match the house, too.
It's gonna match the house, too?
Color, the color, and everybody's gonna match the house.
Okay, it is. Is it, is it in front of the rear line of the house?
No, I don't see that. Is it because of, he's on, yes, it is.
It is, is this?
It is.
Where is the front?
This is the front over here.
Here, right?
Yeah.
So the rear line's the back, here.
So.
So he's, he's in the side lot.
He's in, yeah, he's in front of the rear line of his house. So we're gonna have to do that as a variance as well. But again, because this is a buffer zone, you're, you're putting you back to where you needed to be for the setback, but, or to be behind the rear line of the house actually puts, is a worse environmental impact, you actually are further into the buffer zone, and we're not gonna have you go back to DEC, so.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, and so clearly we re, we would review this ahead of time, saw that you really had no other options, 'cause the buffer line practically goes up to the corner of your deck into the corner of your driveway, so.
I, I got ten and a half acres. I just barely got the house on it. It was really hard.
Yeah. Okay. So any questions from board members? If not, are we okay putting this for a public hearing for September 12th?
Um, can you, uh, remember to bring some pictures next time, so at least we can see layout, some photographs?
Photographs? I might have one here.
I mean, not for night, but for the next, next meeting.
Yeah. All right.
I, I sent photos, I gave photos to the environmental place. I sent them, they wanted photos also.
Yeah, same thing appeared.
So do I have a motion to put this on?
I haven't laid out, I got reflectors out there now.
For public hearing for September 12th?
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Seven o'clock?
Aye.
Same time, seven o'clock?
Yes, please.
Uh, September?
Different day.
Twelve.
It's Wednesday the 12th.
Wednesday.
Wednesday the 12th, yeah.
Okay. A little bit of a curve, we're doing it on Wednesday instead of a Tuesday.
All right, thank you very much. Item number nine, Appeal 3586. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Stevens.
Could you please see our clerk for a second? She's got some information about you having to put note, a sign up and everything. Appeal 3586 Lee Timothy Kaylee, 120 Milltown Road Homes is requesting a nine-foot sideline variance for a proposed 12-foot by 14-foot shed, as well as a variance to allow the shed to be located in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Aye.
Pam, can we just please make a note for the last application to make sure it says in front of the rear line?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Lee?
Hi. Um, so since we spoke last month, you've asked for a bunch of information, pictures, and so I actually did prepare somewhat lengthy, and, uh, for you guys, and hopefully, you know, addresses all your questions.
Good.
And I can go through a page for page with you, and.
Wow.
May not be necessary.
I even have, um, I actually.
That's okay. Fine, we can share.
I even have a video that my wife made of the property showing how it's laid out and everything. You wanna see that? But again, I don't wanna take up too much of your time.
No, it's okay, let's, let's.
But, uh, I'm, hopefully, if you see everything that's, that's there, um, one of the, um, reasons why I want this shed is that we wanna make a small family workshop for, you know, family projects. Uh, one of the reasons why I actually want it on the side of my driveway, or on my driveway itself, is it has to be accessible for my daughter, who is actually handicapped.
Okay.
And, I don't know if you actually visited the property, like you mentioned the last time, you might show.
I, I have not gotten there yet, so.
Okay, so hopefully the pictures will show that the backside of my, right behind my house is us, very hilly, um, very steep and rocky, and in order to put a shed in the back there, I would have to, you know, probably do a lot of modifications, like cutting down trees, make some sort of access path, a road for, for even the guys to put the shed up there, um, and things of that nature.
Do you know why that your, the previous owner removed the shed?
I have.
It was because of its location and he probably didn't have a permit for where it was?
That's what I suspect. All I know is I got there, there was a shed there, and, uh, when the people came to inspect the house, wherever the banks, they, they, they mentioned that there was no permit for it, so he probably didn't remove it.
Okay, so he probably took it down, okay.
But it was recorded in the partial access on Douglas County. It's one of the slides in that, in that presentation.
Okay.
Page four.
Okay, so, and so what you're telling is that the rear of your property, I'm on page seven, the rear of your property is heavily forested, rocky and sloped?
Right.
So in terms of looking for an alternate location?
It's not feasible at this point, because my daughter wouldn't be able to get up there too, too easily.
Okay.
And I included medical records in appendix two. Uh, it's shown that no, over, um.
Okay, um, what we're going to do is actually, we're gonna take a look at this, and then we're gonna return that information to you, because it, we don't want this to be part of a public record.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Fair enough.
So we appreciate that you've provided this for us, but actually.
You can just remove it and.
Yeah, we're gonna actually take this out of this. We're gonna acknowledge in the record that we received and we had the ability to review.
Fair enough.
Medical documentation to support the physical handicap of your daughter, but, um, we are gonna return this information to you.
No problem.
Okay.
Quite sorry about the length of it, but I really want to.
No, 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 it's, it's, we appreciate that you were forthcoming with the information. The information is, we're gonna protect your child. Okay, that's, that's what our interest is. Okay, so.
You know, if I knew, I would've included one for you.
No, no, no.
We don't, we don't want it to follow the exact account. Okay, here's appendix two that has the, your daughter's information.
And here's the copy with, from mine. So, you, did you get four copies of it back? Yes? Okay, good.
Uh, this is actually part of, one.
Oh, did I give you too much?
Yeah, well, you already have the original copy of that.
Yeah, yep, no problem, okay.
But everyone's returned it now, right?
Yes. All right, you're talking about using a generator in there.
No, not gonna use that, I'm just gonna put the generator.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, that's, that's fine. That's, no problem. 'Cause I would not call a generator a motor vehicle. In this case, it's used.
Right. Well, no motor vehicles will actually be put in there per se, it's just gonna be bicycles, bicycles.
You'd be amazed what we hear people put in their sheds, okay? That's all, that's that.
In fact, the shed is, is to help cloud my garage, so I can actually put my motor vehicle in my actual garage, so, 'cause right now all that stuff is in the garage.
So your, your driveway goes over to the lot next to you and then to the road? Is that what I'm looking at here, 'cause it's?
My driveway is next to, the lot next to me is my neighbor's, yeah, but it's not on his property, on my property.
'Cause it says easement, access easement?
Oh, the, the opening of my driveway?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, yeah, that's.
Uh, 'cause I was just looking at, I got a little confused as to where the front road is.
The front road is where that access easement is, that's Milltown Road.
If they were to give this to.
Okay. And actually, and actually, to be quite honest, I actually do own the lot next to there. 126 Milltown Road is also my property, undeveloped.
Oh, okay.
So, but the access easement was there when they subdivided, like, that property.
The, the location you're actually looking to put it in, can you put it a little bit further back to the back corner of your driveway, or is that a problem?
Uh, that's actually, that actually, it would be the back corner of my driveway. It won't, it can't go any further north of.
I'm looking at this, it's the front corner of this, see what I'm saying? Can it go back here?
Oh, yes, it, it's gonna go straight to the back of that corner, of course, yeah.
Okay, so that, your diagram you showed is a little bit to the front.
Right.
And then move it back.
Yeah, okay.
So it, so it'll be where your driveway, all the way at the top of your driveway, that's where it's gonna be?
Exactly. Uh, it's not, it's actually not, won't even be visible. I know you've been mentioning about character in there, but you can't even see it from the road. As a matter of fact, you barely can see my house from the road.
Okay, well, yeah, from, according to the pictures you've provided, yes, that's what it looks like. Okay.
But yeah, I'll put it as far back as I can. I just wanna keep it on the pavement, 'cause I think it's easier.
Understood. You need a solid surface to be able to let your daughter get there. All right, any other comments or questions from board members?
Not for me.
Do I have a motion to put this on for September 12th?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, please see Pam, she'll give you the instructions about your noticing.
Sure.
Okay, and then we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for all your information.
Makes it easy.
Thorough presentation.
Yes, makes it very easy. All right, item number 10, Appeal 359 Sierra Roja. Henry Roja, 9 Cooper's Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow a proposed 672 square foot detached garage to be located in front of the dwelling pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, Michael, how are you?
Yeah, we had come before the board last month. There was an issue regarding the pool. Uh, long and short of it, it's been worked out, um, so that, thus why we're here before you tonight seeking this appeal. Um, what we have before you is, um, a layout of the property. If you're familiar with the Stone Ridge subdivision, if you're coming south on Route A, or on Palin Road, before you hit Route 52, on the right-hand side is part of the Stone Ridge subdivision. If you remember, that kinda looked around from Palin over to 52. This is the house right on the corner of Palin and, whatever the name of the road is there, um, Cooper's Lane. And if, if you're familiar with the site, uh, you, you remember, this was actually, this, this parcel was actually two lots when it was originally subdivided. And what happened is, Mr. Rojas purchased the property, consolidated two lots, and now we have, and actually bought the property on the other side of Palin Road with a land hook.
Yeah, that had a land hook across there, yeah.
So the long and short of it is, uh, this may kind of better depict it. It's, it's a seven-eighth foot, yeah, yeah. Mr. Rojas, 50 feet off the edge of the property, uh, front, the front yard off the edge of the front property line, and what he's, we're looking to do is to install a detached garage. Fairly straightforward, other than the fact that there's provision within the code that indicates accessory buildings are not allowed to be permitted, uh, must be located, actually formally, to the rear of the principal residence located on the same lot. So, that makes all the sense in the world, because you have a one-and-a-lot with a house 50 foot off the road, you're gonna put a detached garage in the front lawn, it doesn't start looking so good. So the, the regulation makes all the sense in the world. The difference in this case is that, uh, if you're, again, familiar with the parcel, it runs up, there's a lot of grade.
Yeah, it's one heck of a hill.
And the driveway was a bear when they put it in, okay? The house was kinda stuffed into the hillside. They did, if you look at where the home is, I have copies of the original files, and that kinda gives me a better idea of where it's going to be. Now, remember, these are two lots, these are combined now, but does show a hundred grades.
Too many lines may be crossed out.
If we, if we decided to put, we, we, they got away with the pool, 'cause the pool sits to the back to the right, and it kinda drops off a little bit, so we kinda, they got, they stuffed the pool in there and made the elevation work. If we had to put the, the detached garage behind the home, effectively, without blowing a hole in the hillside behind the home, ten to 12 feet high, which is a substantial amount of rock there as well, um, if we had to put it there, we ended up with a detached garage that sat about six to eight foot higher than the principal residence, which, at the end of the day, from Palin Road and from Cooper's Lane would look absolutely ridiculous. So, um, the proposal is, is to orient it such a way that it is in the front. We think this is kind of a unique application, because the house is so far off the road, 250 feet, um, the, the detached garage, I think I have an elevation there, or, or a dimension, coming off the front is some 200 and I wanna say 20 something.
Mike, where is the driveway?
It's light, it's light, I'm sorry. The driveway comes out here, it's very light print, but it does come up.
Oh, so it's in the middle of the slope that you're showing us?
Right. It does kinda follow along this way, it comes over here.
Oh, but it, okay, then it goes up?
It does kick over.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that comes a little.
What's the, oh, okay. What's that? I was looking at this round thing, what's the, that has nothing to do with.
That's actually in the middle of the driveway.
That's part of the driveway.
Kind of, right. Or, you're kind of a drive around, it's like a loop.
Okay. The driveway goes like that?
The ones that may be in the file may be a little clearer, 'cause the plotter was really light.
So why, why can't he put the, the garage up at the top of the, past the circle?
Because if you look at the topography of the house, what it does, this goes like this.
Yeah, no, I know, I've stood in by him many times.
Except if I'm looking at this map, like, this doesn't seem to show that. Is this something that's, is this was a proposed thing? What's going on here? That's confusing, you may get rid of it.
That's the site plan that was approved.
That's what I'm saying.
But he, but he bought two lots, so he's combined them.
These two, this lot and this lot are now today combined. This is the original subdivision map. This will never be controlled, okay? So effectively, where the house is now on Rojas, plus her minus sixteen, okay? You'll notice there's a high spot here, okay? You gotta put it over here.
Yes, don't get that away from me, got me confused.
But thank you for trying.
Can you excuse me for not giving you enough information?
Nope. Similar to the last applicant, we're giving it back to you, that's all.
I'll take it.
Thank you for providing it, but.
So, so, the point is, it runs up very quick behind the driveway. Um, I can certainly supplement this with some photos for the record at the, you know, at the next meeting, 'cause that may provide a little bit of a better idea of what's going on. Um, but, but But, but that's the reason why we're looking to do it this way, because.
This, this is a very visible property from Palin Road.
Right.
Absolutely.
Um, so on the one hand, I, I actually think this garage will give some screening to his home, obviously, from people who drive by. I don't think that's your purpose for doing it.
No, right.
Um, but he already has a three-car garage. So, he already has a three-car garage, is, can you explain the need for why there's an additional two-car garage proposed?
Well, I, I think it's a simple matter too, that he has, obviously, a few vehicles, and, and obviously, he's also, garages fill up with storage and things such as that, so it's just, it's really to have another area.
Okay, so he's not looking to take the existing three-car garage and have that become part of his house?
No, that's not the intent.
Okay. I mean, that's, that would be a significant issue.
No.
Is there cer, I know there's a lot of rock on this, a lot of, you know, is there anything where you located it here? Is there a, is there?
Well, it happens is where we have it, the grades are, are, are better, we're, we're more, I mean, there is some grading in order to level the area around it, you see that, it's the grading is shown on there. But it's, it's much, much more level as compared to where we're in the back. In the back, we'd have to blast out to make it work, you know?
Where's the septic? Is it?
Septic.
Cause according to what the original plan was, the septic is showing it's gonna be where you are proposing the garage.
The septic sits down there.
All right, so the septic's in the.
You shouldn't give it to her either, Mike.
No, this is good, because we know, we know what's going on, can't even.
See, it's where the garage is.
Here, here's the house.
Right, which is here.
So the septic for this sits in here.
All right, so you took the septic from lot two and.
This is gone, this is, this will never be, cause they combined.
Right, no, no, I understand that, but.
And this is all clear, right? I don't, there's not trees.
Relatively, there's a, there's a, yeah.
There's a buffer along Palin Road, but going up the.
The 75 foot, I think it is?
Okay.
Here is kinda, they, it was variable, the way they kinda screwed across here.
Okay. All right, I think it gets to, he already has three-car garage.
And what I do have is a copy of the elevation for the drawing, for the proposed, and obviously, no doors are proposed, they're not for the road. The elevation to the original home, that's about there, and this is, effectively, architectural, equal to.
How tall is it? It looks awfully tall. Is it two stories?
No.
Uh, these, these are double dormers here.
I unders, but it's, I mean, I guess I'm not seeing the side view of it to see, yeah, is there a second floor?
These, there's, there's not proposed in terms of anything upstairs for living space or anything like that, so maybe you have some storage up there, but, so these are gonna be trussed. Well, the reason we add that to the windows and the dormers was to kinda try and give it some more architectural look and feel, so.
It's trussed, and one, two-by-six, a two-by-four is not really anything to carry a lot of weight.
What's the square footage of this garage? Cause it is a detached garage, so it's.
672.
So it's less than the 750?
Smaller than what he would be entitled to.
Right.
Yes, I did mark that.
All right, so you're okay with that one?
In my application, I did indicate the size.
672.
Yes.
Does this sort of change the name? Cooper's Lane? Or is it sort of Hawk's name? No, that's a different application. Ooh, careful, John, you're on the microphone.
Okay.
It's okay, he doesn't mind.
Um, the garage is so many stairs going up to a second floor. Right?
Correct.
Do we need the second floor?
Um, well, we have a garage, and then we're gonna have to put a pitch, we're gonna put a pitched roof on it. So the thought was to be able to gain access to it for the purposes of storage and things like that, so. I think the intent is for the second floor, it's just, you know, we're gonna, we have to have a pitched roof, so we have room in that space anyway.
Right, but you can.
It's technically called a one-and-a-half story, right?
I don't believe it.
And you can do that, but you can have a, an inside that just has the beams going across. You don't have to have stairs to a second floor.
Is your issue regarding, your issue is the height?
A potential additional use of that second floor, that's what my issue is.
I, I don't, you know, our plans don't show that, building permits not gonna reflect that, I mean, uh.
You're, you're saying it do show us there?
There's a full staircase here.
I don't, I think it's still permissible to allow to gain second floor access to your garage.
For storage, and you should, probably the plan should indicate that it is for storage, though, maybe that itself.
If that's what it takes.
It does, it says, it does say attic storage, but.
Okay.
That hasn't stopped.
No, I mean, that.
Some residents of this town.
Of course not.
I mean, again, it, it maximi, it's making the variance.
The people, I'm rushing my mother.
But you're not saying that on the record.
I'm not saying we're.
Cause it's 24 feet by, what's the dimensions, 24 by? 20?
I thought it was pretty square, the dimension should be, should be on there.
Okay, yeah, so 20, 24 by 28, so that's, that's a decent sized upstairs there.
Well, it's a 12-12 pitch, so you're not getting all the.
But you're not getting, but, no, but he's putting a dormer in, or, we're calling it a fake dormer.
But it's not a dormer, it goes over there across, it's a dormer through the window.
Actually.
A 12-12 pitch, you're losing.
He's showing space there, addicts, he's showing storage space in that.
If it's a 12-12 pitch, you're gonna lose, depending on how the trusses are, you're gonna lose six feet in from each side before you move. And that, you're gonna bang your head out, you have five feet. So you're losing 12 feet in width on top, so now you're down to 12 feet fine down the middle.
Mm-hmm. Just.
I, I think it's important too, that, that it is a visible spot, you know, uh, I can't speak on behalf of other people that use their second floors for the purposes of.
Is this? Maybe it was asked, is that, that's not, nothing to do with the house, is that that, the house?
That's the plan for the garage.
No, that's, I mean.
No, this is a different application, different application.
What kind of houses then, Mike? I mean, I presume that they're putting something that matches their house?
The architectural component of this, this garage is gonna match that of the house, and I think.
Which is also important, I mean, you wanna, I presume that has 12-12 pitches and stuff like that?
It's important to you, and it's important to the doctor as well, yeah.
Are you offering any screening? Is it appropriate to do? I mean, can you, can you plant anything in this? I understand, it's a very rocky, very steep slope, but.
We can take, we can take a look at that, I, I just didn't think it was, um.
It's, like I said, it's very, the house is very visible from Palin Road, this garage is gonna be very visible. And if this board agrees to putting a garage in the front of a house of new construction, that setting certainly is gonna be setting a precedent for other applications to be coming in the door.
Oh, and I understand that, and well, that's the reason, I think this is a little unique based upon the size of the lot that we're located in, the topography of the property and things such as that.
And, and I certainly get that, I mean, you know, again, he's got land across the street, I wouldn't want him to be putting the garage across the street, that's for sure. Um, even visible from across the street, what's the, I don't, I've never driven down Cooper's Lane yet, so I don't know how visible is this gonna be from the, for the neighbors across the street?
You're not gonna miss it.
Right, that's what I'm concerned about.
But I think, but, but the home that was just constructed on the right side of Cooper's Lane sits much closer to the road, and it's, boom, it's right there. So, um, you know, we, we can take a look at possibly trying to expand on the edge of the garage, maybe, you know, the flat area, cause it kinda comes off and then it drops off. We're doing some filling on the bottom section and doing some cutting to kinda get it wiggled in there. We'd have to pull out the edge of that, do more grading, and getting some plantings around it, if that's something you want us to look at, then I think that's something we can consider.
You're also gonna see it coming down this way, from Palin, it's gonna be right, yeah.
It's gonna be right there, cause this is very visible. You don't see the pool, but.
You know, I think there was an intent by the planning board at the time, by virtue of providing the conservation easement along the length of Palin and so forth, it just, what happens there too, it's where the road comes in. So, there was a certain amount to blow the road in, and we created it all back, it just created the situation where you're, you know, you can't hide it all, so.
We were trying to preserve the look of Palin Road.
And I think probably for 75% of it.
Beyond this lot, it works, right.
Yeah, it does work, yeah.
Right.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I mean, the applicant owns the property across Palin Road, but approximately, how mu, how many acres is that property?
I, I don't have an exact number of these, but I would say it's probably two acres and change on the other side there.
So there's a possibility that some house or something can be built over there?
No, 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 it was, there's a, no, non-disturbances on here as well.
Okay.
We hoped it, we hooked it in.
It was part of the planning board approval, I understand, and nothing to be put on that one.
Okay, so there's a limitation, so even though the applicant has got quite a few acres, but there's a limitation imposed by this town.
Right.
Or, or by this, uh, previous, I mean, by the planning board, on, uh, on the use of the adjoining or adjacent property that the applicant owns. So.
I don't think the, the property on the other side of Palin Road, you talked about, I don't think that has anything to do with the application.
It's just part of his lot. That's all.
I know.
But he's not gonna build, he's not gonna put a garage over there.
I know, I don't think it affects the application, I'm saying.
Right.
I, I think it is worthy to note that there is a restriction there on the other side of putting anything, there's a restriction on his side in terms of the conservation easement, in terms of maybe putting anything else in there, so I think that does play into the whole scope of what we're trying to obtain here.
I mean, the only question, which isn't showing, maybe your photographs will show it, that it's, you know, impractical, I guess is the word I'm looking for, to put it behind the driveway. You know, you have your immediate, uh, elevation lines going off to one side, and that doesn't always show us what's behind. Again, the lines aren't very hard behind that driveway, I mean, just look at this, it sort of looks like you could put it right there, Mike, you know, that's what.
Well, sure, that's because we did, we got a minimal amount of topography in order to kinda work the application, and that's why I gave you a copy of this.
Which gets me confused.
But I didn't wanna confuse you.
So which, which way are the doors facing?
The overhead doors will be facing in to the lot, not toward the front lawn.
Yeah, I was, again, that's a circle driveway that goes around that circle.
So back behind it? So facing toward the circle?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, okay, that, that helps to minimize it. And is the back, who's got the plans? What does the back look like, the rear? Really, what you're gonna be seeing is the side and the back then from Palin Road.
Correct.
Which is the dormers.
Then the dormers are on the.
Side facing the road.
Okay.
The dummy doors. At least put the line, you're facing the line.
We did take some of this into consideration in terms of the layout, and, you know, trying to think about what, what would, you know, be, be concerned about.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I voted on for public hearing September 12th.
Motion? Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor? All aye? All right, let's see what the neighbors say. Are there neighbors to notice?
Yes.
And photos?
Um, does, does Pam have this for the record?
No.
Yes, photos would help, really, showing us from Palin Road, and to the extent that you can do a simulation even in there to. I'm not gonna ask you, don't go nuts, I'm just saying, it's. I, I think the look, especially since you're going to the trouble to make it architecturally pleasing, I think the look of it would help just for us to see what are we seeing.
We'll, we'll take a shot from, from Palin, and then we'll get up into the site to show you behind, really, the elevation, to give you a feel for what's really, the reason, the, what we're asking for it this way.
Right.
Okay?
Yep, thank you. All right, item number 359, item number 11, Appeal 3593 Pachoros? Okay, George Pachoros, 35 Fox Lane, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 28-foot sideline variance for proposed garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Can we start by asking, what size garage?
Uh, the garage is going to be 28 wide by 32 deep.
Wow.
Which is, how many square feet?
That's probably just about 900.
Calculator?
Somewhere in there.
Yeah, it's gonna be over.
Okay, so, for our first question is, the town code limits you to 750 square feet?
On the application, I said, it said a certain percentage of the actual size of the dwelling, which it does fall under.
The footprint?
Yeah, the, the footprint would be smaller than what the percentage was, there was something written on the, uh, either the variance application or the building permit, I can't remember where I saw that.
60% of the.
Yeah, but I thought it was the lesser of the two.
Yeah.
It's the lesser of the two, it's 60.
No.
750 feet or 60%.
All right.
Let's take a look at the statute.
What's the code?
Um, I have the code.
Thank you.
I thought it was the.
Pam's just doing the math for you.
When was your home built?
May not exceed 750 or 60%, whichever is greater.
Oh, okay, so then you are a lot, okay.
What is your footprint, though? We, we need to know that.
Uh, my, my house, I believe, is 3,600 square feet.
Not the total square feet, the footprint.
Oh, that, I'm, I'm not sure.
60% of the footprint, so if your footprint is half of that, or 1,800 square feet, you get 60% of 1,800 square feet, which would be okay. So we need to know what the footprint is.
Okay, um, how would I go, I, this is the first time I'm doing something like this, how would I go about measuring? It's just a, a rough measurement?
Do you have a survey?
Assessor's office has the, uh, the footprint, uh, in the assessor's office.
The proposed garage is 896.
Yeah, that's what I have.
The, or the, the building department would have your ads built, and they would have what your dimensions of your property would be, even though maybe the assessor's office might even have that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Building department? Okay, building department.
Both of them have it.
Well, it's a simple rec time, we measure.
Cam, is this information?
Yeah, I thought, I can, I can come up with these numbers.
Justify, show us the picture of your house. You don't wanna, I can testify at 12,000 square feet, you get a 20 by 20 house.
Well, I, I, um, I don't know if you guys have those, yes, those are the, those are the pictures of my, my house.
Okay, so, some basic questions here, why aren't you connecting the garage to the driveway?
Connecting it to the, well, if I bring it, if I bring it up too close, what's gonna happen is the back corner of the house, there's not gonna be any space between the back corner of the house and the actual, um, garage, so I wouldn't be able to get like a lawnmower through or something, I have to stagger it slightly, so there's an eight foot, there's actually a picture of that in that package as well.
So you're gonna then, are you, no, no, we got, we have it, that's why I'm, I'm looking at that and seeing, yeah, but then, so are you gonna extend the pavement?
Yes, the pavement's gonna go right up to the, to the garage.
But, but that, but it does beg the question, why aren't you putting it behind the house?
Well, aesthetically, where I have it is, is centered on the top of the driveway. If I were to move it over closer towards the house to get a car into the left side, I would have to really come real close to the house to fit it in.
Is there some reason you can't attach it to the house? I'm just asking, we have to look at alternatives. So is there some reason why it couldn't be attached to the rear of the house?
Um, well, the driveway, it, there's really no good attachment point. There, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Behind your house, this section right now. I mean, that sign, I presume this is a garage?
You don't, there's not an existing garage?
There's no existing garage.
Oh, there's no existing garage, it kinda looks like it.
What you're gonna see here is, you see the three cars?
Yeah.
The car all the way to the right, that's where it's gonna, so the garage is gonna.
What is, what is this?
This is my driveway.
Yeah, what is this?
This is a trailer.
No.
This is garage.
That's my masky.
Oh, okay, no, you pointed to this, this, this here is the garage.
You said there would be a garage?
There is no existing, I'm adding another detached garage, this is a two-car garage.
Oh, so the home has a garage?
What is this garage?
Teacher said it did have a garage.
These are garage doors.
Those are two garage doors.
And is there then rooms behind the garage?
There is one, uh, family room behind the garage.
Okay, and there's doors that go out of that family room to the outside?
No.
Is there a deck or anything?
There's a deck in the back, but it's, it's accessed through the kitchen, which is in this part of the house.
Behind the main house?
Right.
But if you were to put the garage behind that section, would you be blocking the windows to the family room?
I would be blocking the complete view of the back.
That's what we're looking for, and that's really the problem.
He's, you're right on top of your neighbor, though.
Well, one, one other thing I'd like to know is that.
And it's relatively clear.
I've been, I've been in contact with the neighbor, and I, I, I was hoping to have it in writing today, that I have her full consent with this, with this project, but it didn't come in the mail yet. So I will, I can provide that in writing.
From your neighbor next door, it had to come in the mail?
No, it's actually, this is what we have here, the color pictures, that actually looks much better than this.
Well, that's all right, so here's the three cars.
Right, the garage would be built right here.
And this is her cleared lawn.
No, this right here is the easement that you're looking at. This is, this is mine here.
Right, so here's, here's hers, there's some kind of easement in the middle?
Yes, there's a, there's a right of way that gets back into here somewhere.
Do we have a plot plan?
Back here.
Which way am I looking?
Here's your property, and this is the one.
Yes, okay, so this right here, this right here is an easement going in to whoever, uh, Mrs. Probst, that owns that land back there.
Oh, flag law, it's a flag law, yeah.
So you're gonna put this right next to a someone's potential driveway?
Well, the, the easement here is 50 feet wide, um, if, if you actually take a look, it, it, yes, I guess, it would be, it would be fairly close to the line. However, um, I've discussed it with her, and she has absolutely no problem with any of this, I can provide that in writing.
Who has no, Mrs.?
Mrs. Probst, who owns.
Okay, how about the person who lives in this house here? I didn't even realize it, you're awfully close to their cleared lawn.
Now, this between, this, this is the edge of my driveway here. That's their car right there. This distance here is probably a good 150 feet.
You're looking for.
Really?
Yeah, if, do we have the, the color pictures?
That's like, really hard to believe.
Your setback is what, 30 feet? You want 28-foot sideline variance for a proposed garage? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
It'll be two feet from the property line?
When was this house built?
And you're gonna get around there and maintain it, and take care of it, and?
Who's the builder?
Uh, I'm gonna be building it with, uh.
Who, who built the house?
Oh, um, I believe it was Carrington Construction, I just, I just moved there, uh, about two years ago.
And you already have a garage, so what's the purpose of this?
You're gonna tell me that this is 150 feet here?[1752.62]
Let me see.
And, so is this, is this your stone wall on your property?
Yeah, this is mine.
On your property?
This is my driveway, yeah. My property comes all the way out to here but tapers in when you get back there.
Oh, got it, okay. So that, but that's, that's a hundred and fifty feet?
It's approximately. I mean, i- if a picture's worth a thousand words, then a visit is worth more than that.
This is, this is this area here?
If, 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 so if you need to look at it.
I don't see that being a distance because from the picture, I mean, your, your driveway to the next house is...
Looks like it's more than a hundred and fifty feet to me, is that what you're saying?
No, just from here to the cleared, to her property line.
No, it can't.
No, but you...
Or from, there's a cleared lawn up there.
No, I'm sorry, my, what I was saying with a hundred and fifty feet was from the edge of...
Your driveway.
Right here, to, to here. There's a, I am, I'm pretty far back, like, if you take a look...
Yeah, we stay with the thing.
Yeah, my house is over here, so I'm standing almost near the street, so this is, this is, this is a fairly large distance.
Your shed's gonna be two feet from the property line. Where's the hundred and fifty feet coming from for what?
Well, they were asking, just as a reference point, where my house is compared to the, the next house over, if you look at the...
So your existing driveway is not on your property line?
No, it is.
Isn't this, is this your driveway?
Yes.
Goes up to the property line, just three, four feet away.
Okay, these lines might not be exactly accurate.
I have this, I have the...
Why can't you put the house back another fifty feet or something, or the garage, rather?
Well, the, the problem is my, this might show a little bit better.
This is what I'm looking at, this is what I'm looking at. Why can't you go back over here, leave room for swimming pool, whatever? You have a garage here?
This is all, this is all rock, the last pa, the last, um, picture in the packet shows...
I mean, I don't like putting a garage two feet from the property line.
No, I don't either.
I mean, you know, because...
How do you maintain it, do work on it, not go on the neighbor's property? You make a mistake two feet away?
Too, yeah, too close.
Especially when that's likely to be somebody's driveway.
Something catches on fire on it, you know? There's a reason for setbacks, you're, you're obliterating the setback and you're gonna have to prove that you can't put that anywhere else behind your house. And you've got how many, you've got...
Two acres.
Four hundred feet behind your house.
The only, the only feasible place to put a garage would be at the top of the driveway. If I come back here, the cost of, the cost, the cost alone of the, of the driveway, to, to construct the driveway to get back there would easily double the cost of this whole project.
Well, that doesn't mean you're not gonna be, that doesn't mean you're gonna allow it, whatever you want it.
Um, there's...
Why do you need this? You have a two-car garage, you wanna put up a nine-hundred-square-foot garage?
The two-car garage that I currently have has, there's a staircase that leads up, so I can only get one of my cars in there. My, my Subaru fits in there, a Jeep Patriot doesn't. I have lawnmowers, I just need, I just ran out of storage. That's what I'm looking for.
The stair, you don't put lawnmowers upstairs?
No, no, no.
Staircase leads to what?
The staircase leads to my house, inside the house. The staircase, when you, when you pull in the second...
So what's it, got four or five steps?
It's got about four or five steps, yes. So a very short car fits on the right side of the garage. The other side is a normal length, but once those two cars are in, there is no room for anything else.
I mean, I'm not gonna tell you where the problem on a client grant, uh, various, with someone at the garage two feet from the property line. I mean, I'm looking at these pictures, not looking at these pictures telling me you got a huge problem. That's pretty flat, that looks flat behind there, I mean, maybe you got rock, I don't know. One, you don't have to dig down for a garage, you can build on top of rock, put your foundation right on it.
But also twenty-eight feet wide by thirty-two feet is, is huge.
Eight ninety-six.
If you need two nine-foot, even give yourself two ten-foot doors, you're at...
I don't see a huge problem in any of these pictures.
Well, the, the, the problem is, these pictures, well, these pictures are no good, you know, they're not...
I don't know.
They're not, and you have to come out and actually take a look at it because there's no other, if you were to locate a garage in the backyard,
There's color.
The backyard, most of this yard, right here...
Pretty narrow lot, but...
Right here is a, is a, is a wall, is a, is a rock wall. This is all woods that goes pretty much straight up, I live right on the...
So put it fifty feet back and you still have a, a nice yard there. Put it right there, you still have a nice yard, you have room for a swimming pool, your septic must be in front. I mean, you're asking us to ignore the law that says you have to have a setback, you know, at one, you know... I don't like to put decks that close, not deck sheds that close. You gotta be able to walk around your buildings on your property, maintain your property, maintain your buildings. Everything that you need to do for your property, you have to do on your property. You put a, a garage two feet away, you got a, a eve coming off that.
Yep.
You're on the next person's property, it's not fair to them. I don't care if it's only gonna be a driveway, it's not fair to your neighbor. There's a reason why there are setbacks.
Even with, with them not having a concern with this? Would that, would that sway...
Even if that, yeah, because we could start creating precedence for the whole town. Get it for him.
Right, and that's actually looking on, looking at the aerial, seeing what else is on the street. I'll have to drive on there, but I don't see any of your other neighbors are going that close to the property lines. We don't have a lot of, the aerial doesn't show us a lot.
Well, the problem with my property is that it's long and thin, there's no, and it's...
Well, if you came back here and you, you're getting it back here and said, well, it's difficult, you see how it goes in, yeah, what are you with this? So I give you a ten-foot variance or something for that. But twenty-eight out of thirty feet, you're asking us to, to, to throw the whole varian, the setback out? And you got, you know, two and a half acres to play with back there.
And that's why I was asking, couldn't you have it start off the corner of your house? It, you know, I don't know, I, even, it doesn't have to go that far, Anna, but I'm just saying, if it starts here, you're moving it over, what...
The, the problem with doing that is now to get a, if I come up with a car up the driveway, I have to basically brush into the side of my house before I can fit a car into here. Aesthetically, this is centered at the top of the driveway.
But it's not.
Suppose you, you're not if you...
You're not, it's two feet from your house and...
No, there's, there's eight feet, it's eight feet from the house.
So, you've got ten feet, at least move it over, split it, put five feet on each side, give yourself five feet on the other side. You're asking us to give you two feet on that side.
Or you...
If you're telling us you've got eight feet to your house, then you've got ten feet to work with for your side yards to center it at the top of your driveway.
I would suggest that you go...
Functionally, it, it, you would hinder the whole...
Looking for arguments to the way you want it, you're gonna have to prove you got a real hard...
Yeah, I, I think at this point, um, you'll have to come with some better arguments because you don't have the votes to make it go forward.
Right.
You wanna come back to, for public hearing, I have no problem with that.
No, I think, I think you, let's, why don't you think about it and come back next month and let's see what...
Well, I'm not sure why my arguments are not valid.
I always said they're valid.
It's a, it's a self-created hardship that you're, that you're giving us here.
No, it's, it's not a self-created...
You have other options.
I, I, if you come by, you'll see that I don't.
Just because it's gonna be more difficult, because you gotta move some rock, doesn't mean you can't build a garage in the back.
I mean, if you had a septic there, then yes, yes, it's much more difficult. But if you had a wetland there, if you had something else, as you've heard some of the other applications before you, then, I mean, then we look at it and say, okay, you really don't have other options. That goes back to Pam.
Rock by itself, people buy lots up on top of the mountain that are rock, and they build on it.
But, you know, I, I, what, what costs?
I think what the board's saying...
What if you can't put it up, that's not the issue, that's not the issue that's gonna cost you twenty thousand dollars more.
Right.
The issue is the law says something. You have to prove the hardship, that you can't do anything else proper with your property to a certain extent. You can't get the enjoyment out of your property. That's what you have to show us.
Well, the hardship is...
Can you step back with the microphone?
Sure. The hardship, the hardship would be if I shift the garage over to the left, I, I run the risk of hitting my house with a car.
Not if you move it back twenty feet.
If I move it back twenty feet, I'm hitting rock and I'm extending, I'm, I'm increasing...
I don't see it in pictures, you're increasing the life of your driveway, yes, it costs more.
And minimize the size of the garage, too, minimize it, move it over a couple feet. Then you've shown us that you've, then you've done everything that you can.
Okay, what would, what would be acceptable, if I return next month with something?
It's not, it's not up to us to tell you what's acceptable.
What the board is saying tonight, you, you've heard their various thoughts and you're, what, we're thinking that you should take these thoughts home, discuss them with the property owners, and come back next month and see if you can address some of the concerns you heard here tonight.
Okay.
All right, and we'll do another review next month.
All right, is, is there an opportunity for anyone to come and actually see this?
I, I will make it a point to do a site visit.
Thank you.
Um, I probably can't do it this weekend, I gotta bring kids back to college, but probably next weekend.
But this will be a further review in September?
Yes.
So you heard the, you heard the concerns, try to address them.
Yes.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Okay, uh, just one other question, if, if I can maneuver this, um, the, the surveys cost a considerable amount of money, is it gonna have to be resurveyed if I, if we can move it back ten feet or to the left the foot, you know?
Well, don't do the survey, come in, leave a comment, tell us what you think we can do and if it's not acceptable, we'll ask more, maybe more suggestions.
Right.
Come with the pictures, show me you got a twenty-foot rock out cropped, it's gonna cost you fifty thousand dollars to blast it out. Just because you have some rock doesn't mean you can't work with it.
Right.
You know, it might be the kind of rock that you build right on it, I don't know.
The, the important thing for us was for you to get the survey in the first place that shows us what your real dimensions are.
Right.
We can work with drawing the box on the existing survey.
Then you gotta make sure that when you get it done, that your surveyor marks where you're gonna put it so you don't get close and then we allow.
Well, that's...
Otherwise, you could end up tearing it down.
So I, I am gonna have to have it resurveyed?
In order, you're gonna have to ask us for something, then you have to make sure...
Not now, when, when you go to build, you're gonna wanna make sure that somebody has properly put the stakes in at the right locations so that the garage is in fact built wherever it gets approved to go.
Okay.
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, make sure your footprint is correctly located at that time.
Right. Okay?
And we're gonna wanna know what the garage is gonna look like?
Yeah, I have the building plan, it's gonna look like the front of my house.
Okay.
Okay.
With the same stone and the vinyl siding and all that.
All right, we'll see you again next month.
Thank you.
And I have a suggestion for you also, to look at some alternatives so that this way you can say, well, this is what I want, but I'm willing to back up to something else also, so give us some wiggle room.
Good thoughts.
Thank you.
All right, item number twelve, Appeal three, five, nine, four, I don't wanna say this wrong, but Bucolo? Bucolo?
Yes.
Okay. Marazio Bucolo, one seventy-five Premier Road, Hopeful Junction is requesting a thirteen-foot sideline variance for an existing eight-foot by twelve-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. All right, um...
It's pretty simple from what we heard tonight.
Nothing is as simple as it appears. All right, so your shed is eight foot by twelve feet?
It's actually shed, not to the garage. So why are you asking for the, uh, variance?
Well, the, the shed is, is up there already and it's in an ideal spot. It's an ideal spot, it's covered by grass, my next-door neighbor to the left of it, you know, it blocks their view from the house.
When did the shed go up?
About a couple of years ago.
They'd rather see your shed than your house, huh? They'd rather see your shed than your house, huh?
Well, they, they can't see the shed.
All right, who put the shed up a couple of years ago?
I did.
See, didn't need a building permit because it's less than a hundred square feet, right? But, you put it in the wrong spot.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about...
Give us pictures or anything so we have an idea where it is?
I don't have pictures.
Just the aerial is in the packet.
That's on it.
But you, but you know what, you can't even see it.
Hard to see it.
Well, it, it all, it appears that you've...
Why can't you move it over thirteen...
It appears you've built things in your backyard since this aerial photo was taken.
Oh, yes, I got a, a pool and a deck.
You have a pool and you have a twelve-foot by sixteen-foot deck.
Right, that I just did.
And so you have this shed is twenty feet from the pool.
Right. And I have the, uh, uh, you have the secondary outlet, it's close by the shed, I didn't wanna put it in the middle of the yard where the kids could run into it when they're running around in the yard. Because I think that it's gotta be about ten to twenty feet away from where the pump is.
Are you still storing pool equipment in it, is that why it's not practical?
Well, I have my tractor, my snow blower, or my weed whacker, the chemicals for the pool in it. Because I don't wanna keep it in the garage where the kids could, you know, when they get their toys they can play with.
What's, what's the surface that it's on, is it on a concrete pad?
No, it's on, it's on wood.
Travel, well, it's on wood?
Can it be moved?
I don't know if it can, because the, the rest of the area, towards the back, it's on a slope. Uh, I do have a swing set to the right.
Can you get closer to the pool, just move it in a little bit, yes, no, you can't move it too deep, you're closer to the pool?
No, because it's, it's kinda hard to do that. I mean, I got the pole where the, the, the electric thing is in the middle.
Right between that and the, right next to the shed or between...
Yeah, it's right next to the shed, because I didn't want the kids, if they're running, run into it.
On the side or...
So I put it right on the side of the shed.
Now, you say the side, is that the side between...
The pool and, and the shed.
If you go that way, you'll go over there.
Uh, yeah, it'll go...
So you have electrical supply out there, what's that for, for the pool, the filter and everything?
That was for code for the pool, because you have to have a secondary outlet.
Can you move it up next to it?
Twenty, it's only twenty feet from the pool there, huh?
When did your pool go in?
May.
Oh, so just this year, so...
And you got a proper permit and everything for that?
Well, I, I, I'm, the only way I get a CO is if I get the shed in compliance.
That's why he's here. You're either selling your house or there's something else you're trying to do.
No, they said, gee, you gotta get, uh, try to get a variance, you know, and then we could give you the CO for it, because the, the deck and the pool...
You have a violation now, right, you have a violation.
No, I, I'm not, they just...
Well, the shed's a violation.
Right.
Yeah, the shed.
That's what they told me.
Right.
But could, could you move the shed up so it's next, it's right next to the outlets?
And then...
Oh, no, it, it is.
I understand you've got the, the electrical power there, but can you put shrubs or something near there so that the kids get distracted by the shrubs and they don't, you know, they're not gonna go riding, running into shrubs? You know, you do have other options, that's our, that's our...
Well, some of the, while the property is a little, it's, uh, it's not level.
So between, is, is the shed on the same elevation as the pool, or are you saying one's higher or lower?
Well, the pool's a little bit down, because they had a, they had to level that off.
So, but between the pool and the shed, is that a level area? Or does it slope, it does it slope in one direction?
It slopes now because of, we dug the trench, so I was trying to make it even.
If you take pictures of it, you think you're gonna convince us, you got a little bit of a hardship there that we can approve this?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, the neighbors don't have a problem with it and it's in a perfect spot, it's, it's hidden by the, by the trees.
Hidden by trees, you can't see it?
Well, not from, not from...
Where's your septic?
It's, uh, by the, it's behind the wooden entry, over there. It's, uh, by the, it's behind the wooden entry over there.
Behind the wooden entry. Oh, okay. Back on that side. Okay.
It's right, right around there.
So that doesn't help you?
Could we just look at this flat piece of paper where it doesn't give us an indication that you have any kind of hardship?
In the back, it slopes a little bit. I got tree stumps in the back.
The aerial's not showing us that you have a great, any great slope?
Right.
Not at all?
Yeah. I think there's, I think you need to go back and visit the location and see if you can move the shed because I think that would solve your problem faster than having us review it.
I don't know where I can move it. I mean, if you come out and see the property, you can see. I don't know where to put it. I mean, it's a, it's a shed just like everybody else has. It's, I mean, my neighbor said his, he's directly next to it. So it's, you know, we both got our sheds even.
Is he as close to the property line as yours? Is that what you're telling us?
No, I'm not telling you that.
Well, I just-
It's just in the same area.
Not trying to control, maybe the character of the neighborhood, yeah.
Um, I, I think, I think we need to revisit this. I need to, I think you need to look and see what your options are. I will gladly come out, do a site visit, and let's walk around and see what we can do there. But I'm not ready to put this for public hearing. All right, so-
Are you in the process of selling or something?
No.
Okay.
He just wants to close out his pool.
Too much time.
All right. Let's, let's see you again in September.
Okay.
All right. In the meantime, I will get out there probably, like I said, not this coming weekend, probably the following weekend.
Okay.
But again, as I said earlier also, that you look at options and if you can move your shed and reduce the variance, that'll help us.
All right, because I'm only asking for 13 feet.
Uh, that's, it's still 13 feet.
At least you got, you got some room between your property lines. Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes. He's given us more than two feet to work with.
Yes.
All right. We'll see you again next month.
No matter what, you have to show some sort of, some sort of hardship for us to grant the variance. Some hardship that was not created by you. Right now, you're saying, why, you put the electrical there, but you put the electrical there.
Right. I mean, it's a remedy because I already have it up.
You thought you were far enough away, but you're not by law. So that's why you're here.
We'll come out and see what your options are.
Okay.
Okay? We'll see you again next month.
Okay, go ahead.
Item number 13, Appeal 3595. I'm sorry if I'm going to say this wrong. Benet, Benitch? Am I saying this right?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Roy Benitch is requesting permission to place an additional two-foot by three-foot informational sign on his property located at 2737 Route 52, Hopeful Junction, LaChambeau, pursuant to Section 153 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. All right. My understanding is that prior to the sign ordinance change, your sign was in fact allowed. And my understanding is that the town board is actually reviewing the sign ordinance again because they're recognizing that there are some issues with the sizing. And so your application now will, will help you meet the existing ordinance. But in the meantime, just for the advice of the board, the town board is reviewing the ordinance, so.
And this is an informational sign? What's that mean?
I can have, I gave you some pictures. I have three sets of the, of the sign for the three different directions. I have four sets.
We can check.
Three sets of the, of the directions.
Eat here, eat here, eat here. Go ahead.
The three signs.
So you're looking to replace this sign with a permanent sign or just keep it-
No, no, I have a permanent sign. What has happened, I had this sign here for many years.
Right.
Then all of a sudden, a new law was passed.
Right. The zoning ordinance changed, the signing ordinance changed.
I went, I paid my dues for a full year. All of a sudden, they came and took my sign. What happened? Oh, all right. I went and picked up my sign. They came and picked it up again. I said, what happened now? Uh, well, you're only supposed to have it up for two weeks, six times a year. I said, what are you talking about?
Yeah.
When did, when did this come about? Well, we didn't exactly know what the law was. You just passed the law. And-
But that's my point. This is a portable sign that you can take in and out.
Yeah. This is a sign for just specials. Since I took that sign off, my brunch business is down by 50%. The restaurant business is down by 10%.
So there's an economic hardship to your restaurant business because people aren't necessarily aware of-
This, you know, people are driving by at night and day. They see this, the Christmas special, New Year's Eve special. They want you to have it up for two weeks.
So let's say we approve this. How are we going to identify it as this sign in this location?
The location of the sign?
Yeah.
It's right there, by the right-hand side of the mailbox. It's on the grass. It's on my property.
Well, that's not the issue. How do, if we approve it, how do we know we're approving this sign? You might, you know, put another sign up or another-
Yeah, we wouldn't want you to necessarily replace it with a bigger sign just because you got permission for this sign.
Well, I would give you, you got dimensions, two by three feet.
It's not that we don't trust you. We just got to be careful all the time.
Right. We're just-
You can trust, after 28 years there, I think you can trust me. The only thing that'll change on that sign is like New Year's Eve.
Okay, but are you going to change the location? You're not, you'll change the writing on the sign. We get that.
Nothing else.
But are you going to change the location? Like, is there a light or something that shines on it where it is?
No, no, no. It just stays there like itself. There's no light on it, nothing.
So can you tell us how far it is for, for, for next meeting, for the public hearing? Can you tell us how far off the mailbox it is, just so that-
Yeah, measure it.
The building department needs to know what your approved location will is going to be.
The right-hand side of the mailbox, I would say about five, six feet. And inside the grass on my property, approximately 10 feet in.
Okay, but you can measure it from your mailbox. And let's say it's 20 feet east of the mailbox or something like that. We pick a spot.
Yeah. Well, can we, can we identify the location?
You want me to give you the exact, when I come back?
Yeah, when you come back, sure.
An approximate area, because if it snows, you, you might need to move it or something like that.
Oh, when it's bad weather, it goes in. We don't, I don't leave it out there in bad weather. Snow and all that.
Except for, except for Christmas and for New Year's specials.
Yeah. But if you forecast about 20 inches of snow, I take it in.
Santa Claus doesn't hold it out there.
I stay out there with the sign in my hand.
Okay.
Just, just so we can identify.
It's always been there. It's just that two weeks, if you break a reservation for New Year's Eve, you don't make it two weeks in advance. It's made months in advance.
We understand. We're joking a little bit. We need to fix the location.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. No problem.
And then dimensions of the sign? Give us the dimensions of the, you know-
It's two feet by three feet.
It's two feet by three feet, whatever it is.
Two feet by three feet. I think that's what it is. But I'll give you exact to the-
Thank you. It's on there.
Centimeters.
I didn't see that.
So a motion to-
Okay, wait a minute. Now, this is a sign that keeps moving back and forth. How-
No, no, it doesn't, doesn't move.
No, he's saying he puts it in the same location.
It stays, it'll stay in the same spot. Just the writing will change.
No, but you just mentioned that during the, bad weather, you move the sign inside. You just mentioned that during inclement weather or bad weather, you move the sign inside when it snows or something.
Yeah. The plow, the plow comes.
No, but it's on the grass.
It's on my grass, yeah.
Correct. So again, what I'm saying, I'm trying to identify the location where it's going to be there as almost a permanent sign, even though it's a temporary carry sign.
That's what we're just asking. He's going to measure-
Correct. But again, is it going to be a permanent sign up there or is it, or is it going to be a sign that will keep moving around?
Well, as he's, for example, could he put it on certain pavers? You approve with the paver location, it's on the paver.
Correct. So again-
It's got to be a permanent sign in that spot.
Right. That's what we're looking for.
They can move it, but we're going to have to fix it.
Yeah, and I'll give you the dimensions.
No, no, we have to put some pavers or some kind of a, like a monument or some kind of a-
What we're trying to say is the building department, we'd like them to be able to easily identify where is the approved spot for that sign. And so what Aziz is suggesting is maybe if, instead of putting it on the grass, can you put a couple concrete pavers or something in it?
On papers.
You know?
You put a couple lawn papers.
You know, the couple bricks? Just put a couple bricks that it will sit on.
I have bricks all around it.
Oh, okay. That does, we're not seeing that in the picture.
It's not. I just took that out of the back. I don't have it up now. I just took that to take a picture to show you.
Oh, okay. All right. So, so wherever the bricks are going to be, that will help the building department understand that that's the approved location for the sign.
See this rubber here?
Yeah.
There's bricks all around it and also on the other side to hold it in one spot. Otherwise, it'll blow away.
Oh, so the bricks-
So it is identified by the-
And those bricks-
So the bricks stay on the, on the rubber?
That helps.
Sign, not on the, not on the grass.
Yeah, what he should do is put pavers.
To prove it, this portable sign to be placed in front of your property in a location that's 20 feet from your ba, mailbox as identified, and you tell us what the bricks are, okay? And then we'll prove it for there if we can.
Yeah, I'll try. I'll, I'll put the bricks on the next picture. I'll take new pictures.
Yeah. But you always keep, those bricks will be stationary.
Yeah. No problem.
All right, good. Do I have a motion okay this for-
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not, the bricks are inside the metallic base or are they-
No.
We'll work, we'll work on them.
Okay. I'm, I'm not talking about the bricks on top of the thing. I'm talking about a brick as a base for the, for the, for the sign.
Yeah, that's what you're going to do. You're going to put bricks and identify the location.
Pavers, pavers.
Then you can have something on top to hold it, right?
And the bricks are going to stay there at that location all year round?
Yeah, the bricks are there. Because they're also protecting the sign from not falling down.
What we're suggesting is can you put bricks underneath the sign as well as bricks on top of it?
Oh, yeah.
So that the bricks that are on the grass will tell the building department-
You have a brick base, you have a brick base to place it.
Cement, cement base.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is, this is your sign. Put a couple bricks so your sign sits on there, okay?
All right.
And then you can put, then you can put some other bricks on the by, base of the sign all over.
No problem. I understand.
All right, good.
Good, good. Thank you.
So now we're, do I have a motion okay for public hearing for September 12?
So moved, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's a handout here for you.
Okay. And last but not least, Appeal 3596, Melnick. Berman and Mary Melnick, 41, Derek Drive, Hopeful Junction, are requesting a 22-foot rear line variance for a proposed 10-foot by 16-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance.
This is my son-in-law. He's my-
That's fine, as long as-
And a neighbor, too.
And a neighbor.
Okay. All right.
Who are talking to me?
So the, the shed is not here now.
No.
Okay. You're proposing to put a shed. What's the, what's the proposed use of that shed?
This is storage.
Predominantly what? Well, snow blower, snow blower, that type of thing.
Okay. We're just making sure it's not, we've had people say boats and trailers and things like that. And if it's motor, if it's motor vehicles, then it's a different category. That's all.
Why do you want it there?
Why do we want it there?
Yeah.
All right. You're questioning the actual space of where it is on that?
Yeah. I mean, why do you, we have to put in a location where you need a variance.
Like, why isn't it at the top of the driveway? Why can't you move it in so that it's at the top of the driveway if it's the snow blower and, can we, can we ask you, oh, we have, we have your, we have your survey.
Yeah, we have your survey.
Okay.
You notice, um-
Just, it's important, your microphone for anybody who's watching, they can't hear you unless you have a microphone.
Okay. Without, without pictures, and we do have pictures here, you can't really put it at the top of the driveway.
Okay.
Because the drainage of the property, and if you saw these pictures, you'd see that the whole back of the yard behind the house is relatively steep. So there's no place to put it there. If you put it right up against there, the drainage for the property, the builder had to create a swale on the property so that the water could drain off the back of the property.
Okay.
And then out, if you see it, there's a, I call it the pond. What do they call it there?
Holding pond.
Yeah, it's quite large and a lot of water goes into that.
So if it's heavy rains, it holds it there until it can dissipate and-
Right. And it really is for all the lots above it. It's a, it's a very strange, I don't know how well you know that development, but much of it is quite hilly and all the lots behind us.
How do you get your equipment into the shed now?
I'm sorry?
You have a swale.
Oh, serenity wave.
I know. Going to have to get, going to have to get some kind of a, um-
Okay.
Some kind of a, um-
I know. I recognize that, yeah.
Ramp. Going to have to design a ramp and make that work.
Wait, how long ago was this house built? Just a couple of years ago?
Uh, was finished in April, May?
Just like four months ago.
This year? Yes. Right.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. And that swale, is that why that you have to put it that far away from your driveway?
Well, the picture here, I don't know if it really does it any justice, but I mean, I've got a series of pictures here. You can see it on the driveway. And the other problem is if you take a look away that driveway, if I'm back out of the driveway, there is no spot, if there's a shed there, to even swing the car to make that turn. The driveway in reality is really poorly designed relative to backing out.
So you're trying to put the shed with those four sticks into the corners of your shed?
Yes. That's correct.
You can see the elevation a little bit.
Pictures don't do it justice. It actually goes up quite a bit higher than that. And if you notice, the shed itself, or excuse me, the, the lot itself is a very odd shape.
Yes.
It's a triangular piece and being that it has to be behind the house, really cuts down on the available space. It's one and a half acres and more than one acre of that, we can't put the shed on any of that part of it. We'd love to put it over there by the pond, but that's in front of the house.
Yeah.
Can't do it there.
I don't have any big concerns with this.
Yeah, I think the-
It's behind the house.
I think the use of their lot, the shape of the lot. The shape of the lot, the other features on their lot are making it difficult. Where's your septic?
It's on the other side of the house.
To the right of-
Front or back? Front yard or backyard?
It's, it's really the, I believe, the side yard.
Oh, it's the other side yard?
Right. It's on the other side from the driveway.
Where the grass is green.
Correct.
At least it's in the back. They got room around it. You got some trees there that will cut it off eventually from the neighbor.
Are you proposing any, I mean, again, because you're of that wide open area for your front, can you put any screening along the one side? Not the side closest to the house, the other side so that-
Well, all along that holding pond, at this point, is all grown in.
Is it? Is it?
Yeah, there's, there's-
Is it scrub? Is it three-foot-high plants? What is it?
Oh, no. It's all black locust of about eight to 10 feet high already.
Oh, okay. All right.
On both sides of that holding pond.
So you, so anybody coming around that corner there is, it's pretty, they're not going to necessarily see this. What I'm getting at is will they see the shed?
The only way they'll see the shed is if they look directly down the driveway. That's the only vantage point they would have. And as you notice in the backyard, the house that you see on one of those pictures is the closest house, and that's not even really the adjacent house. In between that house and others, there is a, there is a, a driveway, 700-foot-long driveway that goes up kind of along the 300 and, what is that? 390-foot section. There's a driveway there. But goes, he's got 700-foot driveway just to get back into his house.
All right. So again, the screening also prevents you then from moving it to some, the, the trees that are there prevent you from moving it to some other locations as well? Even though your back, the immediate area behind your home is, is cleared?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it possible to move, to propose a little bit closer to your driveway?
Well, then you're right in the middle of a swale. That's where we have intermittent river running there. And a good rain, you got a good river there. Because everything in back is all sloping up.
Yeah, you don't want, you don't want to block that swell.
No, no, no. And you got three houses. We're getting all the water from three houses.
Right.
Comes down the backyard there. And it ends up there and then it just runs like a river out to the, to the holding pond.
So you can't, you don't want to disturb that.
And over, over closer to the house, in behind the house, over by the-
Well, the only place you could possibly do it is if you took the deck down or the stairs, the deck stairs. If you took the deck stairs down, you could put it there, but you don't want a shed there.
Behind, no.
No, no. I mean, it would be a nightmare. You don't want a shed three feet from the house.
It's going to look like the house also. Will it stay siding? Move?
Yeah. It's going to very, very close match to what, way the house looks.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Motion for a revise.
September 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. We'll see you next month. See Pam, though, about instructions related to your, we, we have to give your, your neighbors an opportunity to comment on this, okay? So if they raise any objections to it, we have to be able to hear any concerns they might have. So, all right. So get the, Pam, we'll give you the instructions about putting up a sign. And then we'll, then we'll see you again next month.
Okay, thank you.
Motion for a adjourn?
Thank you very much.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.